Good afternoon. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I'm Marsha Herbert, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the June 9th, 2021 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolK12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Board members and staff are present in the boardroom. And no more virtual. Citizen participation is scheduled on the agenda for approximately 5:15 and 5:30. Speakers will be allowed in the boardroom individually for the allotted time, and we need to fix this. Citizens who wish to speak must adhere to the guidelines and safety precautions we have previously publicized in communication about public comment for the meeting. I would remind us all to silence our cellphones and other devices around us that the microphones may pick up. Also, we should each silence our microphones when we are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. So we're gonna have to use this whole thing. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I need an approval of the agenda. Motion?
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia and seconded by?
Second.
By Mr. Kyler. Ms. Sevigny, I'd like for you to go forward.
Yes, Ms. Herbert, I would like to make a motion to table the following items until our June 21st meeting. Those items include Item 8A, Approval of Appointments; 8I, Ratification of 2022 ABSASCO Master Agreement; 8L, the Approval of the Operating Budget Adjustments; 8M, Approval of Food Services Budget Adjustment; and 8N, the Approval of the Operating Budget Transfer. These are all items that weren't quite ready to go for this evening.
Absolutely.
And we, since we have a work session scheduled for the 21st, we're gonna plan to have an extra meeting to address several items at that time.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Dr. Dorsey, second it. Any other comments for the amended motion? Okay, I will call for the vote for the, now do I do the whole agenda or?
Just the agenda as amended.
Yeah, agenda as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the unapproved Board Meeting Minutes, May 12th, 2021.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey and seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Pataglia. Comments, corrections? Ms. Sevigny.
Ms. Herbert, I would like to make one comment about just the very first sentence. All of our minutes recently have said a hybrid virtual Board of Education meeting, and I think that that's been confusing to the community. I've seen lots of emails asking us why we're not meeting in person, and we've been meeting in person since July of last year. So I just, I'm curious if we should maybe think about rewording this instead of hybrid virtual.
Yes.
Just saying hybrid.
Or just strike those two words.
Or just that we had, just strike both of those words and say that we had a meeting that day.
All right, any other comments, questions?
Um, I have.
Yeah, let's remember, yeah, try to use our cards. Go ahead, Ms. Devanshy.
On page 10, under Board Member Activities and Correspondence, the statement, she stated these are isolated incidents. It should be, she stated these are not isolated incidents.
So which page was that?
Page 10.
Page 10.
So you want to add the word "not"?
Yes.
Which is what she said.
Yeah.
Any other corrections to the May 12 minutes? Ms. Sevigny?
On page 16, where we were talking about the virtual program?
Yes.
It says, so page 16, second paragraph, the teachers are a part of this one-year virtual program, will be put in a position the following year. I would, I would like to make it, that sounds a little bit confusing. It sounds like we're adding positions, which we're not.
No, we're not.
These are temporary positions and not a permanent increase in headcount.
Correct.
I would just like to make that clarification that we had discussed that at the meeting.
Should we say "may" instead of "will"?
Likely, what would, what would occur is by attrition.
Yes.
We'd be able to place those folks, so.
And you stated that.
Yeah, right.
Before.
So, trying to find where, um, you know, we could say that, trying to, trying to think of how to word that.
I know.
You know, those folks who teach in that program for a year will be, and I might look to Mr. O'Neal, eligible to be placed in another position per their certification in the system. In other words, you're not gonna, you're not gonna lose a job if you participate in the teaching in that virtual program the following year. We will, we will find you a home per the attrition as retirements and those sorts of things happen.
And we fully believe that the attrition rate will cover this, like we're not, they're temporary positions, they won't be, they won't be fired or laid off or anything, but it's also not an increase to headcount the following year.
It is not an increase to FTE, correct. So I can work with Ms. Lucido to finalize that, to make sure that accurate reflects that.
I think that would be a good clarification, because we did discuss that at the, at the meeting, just, okay.
Any other comments? All right, I call for the vote, vote for the amendments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the unapproved Special Board Meeting Minutes for May 24th, 2021.
So moved.
By Ms. Sevigny and seconded by?
I'll second.
Ms. Pataglia. Comments, questions? Ms. Sevigny?
I would just say that the same comment about cross out hybrid virtual in the first sentence.
Any other corrections? All right, I call for the vote. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, we will have the Carroll County Student Government Report. So nice to see you in person.
You as well.
Thank you.
So, good evening, Board Members. I'm Jamie Hahn. Thank you for having me here. It feels great to finally be here in person. My co-president, Emily, could not be here today, but it's been a great year of working with her, and I know she's had a phenomenal experience with working with CCSGA thus far. I wish her the best of luck now that she has graduated. As for CCSGA, Devanshy may have mentioned this in our last meeting, but on May 5th, CCSGA held our final General Assembly for the school year. We held elections for next year's board, and I was reelected as the president, so it'll be wonderful to be giving these reports next year as well. I wanted to reiterate a big congratulations to Nikki Zhang, who was elected as the Vice President, and Jack Nelson, who was elected as the Secretary. All of the appointed staff positions, as well as second Vice President, will be decided by Mr. Melhor and I so that they can be announced soon, and updates will be posted on the carol.sga Instagram page when they are finalized. COVID permitting, we're hoping to have some form of CCSGA end-of-year event, as we typically do, in order to celebrate the year and also swear in our new officers. It certainly has been an unconventional year with CCSGA, but we have high hopes that we can return to normalcy soon. I was invited to be part of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council, and I'm looking forward to hearing all the student contributions to the CCPS strategic plan, as well as offering my own input. It is important, after all, that we work to better this county. Thank you all, and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. At this time, we will have student recognition and Dr. Lockard.
Okay.
Well, Members, if you'd like to come to the?
Yes, we need to come down.
Front of the dais, we have some students we'd like to recognize this evening, and I'll set this up to make sure everybody understands what we're recognizing. We have 14 students from the Carroll County Career and Technology Center who have earned gold medals at the Virtual Skills USA Maryland State Championships. This is the state-level competition for high school and post-secondary students who are enrolled in career and technology programs. The gold medal winners are now eligible to represent Maryland at the Virtual Leadership and Skills Conference, which is taking place this month. So we're really proud of these students. They represent Carroll County Public Schools really well, and obviously have done incredibly well as gold medal winners at the Skills USA Maryland State Championships. So I'm gonna try to make sure I get to everybody who I think is here, and then if I miss anybody, I'm sure people will let me know, and we'll, 14, we'll recognize them all. So first, Joshua Bowman from Winters Mill High School, Grade 11, gold medal in the Promotional Bulletin Board. Joshua? Joshua, congratulations. Board Members. Joshua's parents, Jonathan and Lisa, I believe are here, maybe? Also like to congratulate Lillian Hip, South Carroll High School, Grade 11, gold medal in Graphic Communications. Lillian, are you here? There she is. Lillian's parents, Jason and Sarah Hip. Next up, Haley Rager. Haley is an 11th grader at Manchester Valley High School. She got the gold medal for photography, Haley. Haley's parents, Julie and Jason, Julie Dunner and Jason. Next up, we recognize Hannah Zimmerman from Manchester Valley High School, Grade 12. She got the gold medal in the American Spirit Event. Hannah, you hear Hannah? Hannah's parents, Mark and Sandra. And I think, from South Carroll High School, Stephanie Zirkenbach. Stephanie, 11th grade, gold medal winner in Advertising Design. Stephanie's parents, Paris and Jennifer. Okay, did I miss any students that are here with us before I introduce? And Principal Betsy Donovan, thank you and your staff for supporting our students and creating, providing these great programs. Also, winners from Winters Mill High School, Melody Baker, Grade 11, in the American Spirit Event. Waverly Brennan from Westminster High School, Grade 12, in Digital Cinema Production. Luke DeToda, Grade 12, Manchester Valley High School, in the Promotional Bulletin Board Event. Austin Golden from Littlestown High School, remember we have a unique partnership with Littletown, Littlestown High, uh, School District, Grade 12, in the Collision Repair Event. Mara Hoak, Grade 12, from Westminster High School, in the Automotive Refinishing Technology Event. Allison Lord, Westminster High School, Grade 12, Digital Cinema Production. Brayden Million, Westminster High School, Grade 12, American Spirit, gold medal in that event. I'll just double check in here. Kaitlin Sambuco, Liberty High School, Grade 12, Cosmetology Gold Medal. And Kimberly Yoder, Century High School, Grade 11, Promotional Bulletin Board Event. Let's give all of our Skills USA Champion Gold Medal winners another round of applause. Thank you so much for being here.
Mr. Kyler.
To have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers will be allowed in the boardroom. Citizens who wish to speak must adhere to social distancing guidelines and safety precautions we have previously publicized. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or US mail. Citizen participation is not intended to be question-and-answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the Superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the board meeting to arrange a time to respond to the questions. The Superintendent Board reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the citizen participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. It is the intent of the Board to allow all citizens an opportunity to speak. Therefore, the Board has scheduled time on the agenda for citizen participation at approximately 5:15 and 6:30. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. If 30 minutes have passed and there are citizens who have not addressed the Board, additional time may be allotted later in the meeting. We currently have 16, and the Board wants to allow the 16 to go ahead and do it. If more appear at 6:30, they'll be able to speak then, but we're not gonna limit it to the 30 minutes. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. When the allotted time expires, the Speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. The public may not display signs or posters during the board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. And I know occasionally people will bring some handouts, and you're welcome to leave them also. I'll hold Tony. Second speaker, Rebecca, is it Ross?
Yes, sir.
Oh, here comes Tony, I'm sorry.
That has signed later something. So, good evening, Superintendent Lockard, Board Members, Commissioner Weaver. Started off the year, we had some missing meetings and things, and I want to finish off the year. This is finishing up year 36 here in Carroll, about as different as any year I can imagine. But we've made it. Working together, we have come through, and we will make it work for the students come this fall. But there are things that still need to be done. We still need for you guys to be able to work out a comprehensive package to reward the teachers for what they've done. Systems around the state have rewarded teachers with PD credit, six PD credits for the work they did throughout the year, to be able to make it work for the students. And you're asking people to do things over the summer to get that credit where they've done it all throughout the school year to make it work. Just recognition, to say thank you for all that you've done so that we've been able to do everything we can for the students. Recognition in appropriate salary, recognition in work. Every once in a while, people want to be able to feel good about where they're going to. I've gotten too many emails from teachers telling me goodbye, that they are tired of not being appreciated, and they're not gonna be returning. We're gonna lose a lot of good teachers at the end of this year, either to retirement or to say they're not returning here, they're either looking for another job, or they're gonna go somewhere else to teach because they're not feeling appreciated. That should not be happening. We need the good teachers. We need everyone working together, and we need people to be appreciated. You have the ability to do that. It doesn't take that much. Please make that effort, as we end this year, to work together, work with CCA, with your other groups, and make everyone feel appreciated so they want to return back for next year to start off the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak with all of you to follow up with a conversation I had with Mr. Kyler at a community meeting. I'm sure you're aware that a lot of parents have concerns with this critical race theory that's being presented in front of our students currently and more is to come. And I believe that the role of a public school system is to educate rather than indoctrinate our students. I believe that all teachers, administrators, employees, and students involved in the Carroll Public Schools should be treated as unique individuals endowed with equal inadmissible rights without respect to race or sex. Critical race theory and/or related theories use race as a tool to intimidate, divide, label, and assume any individual to have innate racist tendencies, excuse me. The Carroll County Public Schools, to put students first and prevent the promotion of any divisive ideologies that's based on race or sex from being incorporated into the K-12 public education standards in our county, I request that the Board of Ed grant a resolution rejecting CRT into our classrooms immediately. This rolls into another concern that a lot of parents in the county have, and that is the way that the situation was dealt with, with the FSK and the Man Valley students. My worst fears happened. As a community, we're a very tight community, and we bawl at each other's backs, and our students and our staff need to know that we have their back, that every person is innocent until proven guilty, that there will be no assumption of guilt, and that it will be fully and fairly investigated. The email that was sent from Dr. Lockard was very generic as far as the racism. I think in 2021, we're all well aware that racism is nothing that we're gonna accept as a community, as a society. And what should have been in that email from Dr. Lockard was the fact that we were gonna have a full and fair process for our boys, for our students. These families, what they were put through is unacceptable. The fear and the stress that they felt for their senior year, these kids should be in excitement and looking forward to their graduation. Instead, they were put through this social media mess that now will also always be scarred for these kids. And we should have had their back. We should always have our students, our teachers, all of us should have each other's back until we find out the facts and not assume. And having a principal make assumptions in a morning announcement or forcing our children to go to sensitivity courses is unacceptable. If you push that sensitivity onto our students, we will fight it. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Haynes.
Hi, my name is Amy Haynes. I've been driving for Clover Transportation for 11 years. I'm here tonight to express my views and concerns regarding the relationship between the bus drivers and the Department of Transportation for Carroll County. I work for Clover Transportation. I work almost 38 hours a week. I love the job I'm doing, and I love my contractor. Most of all, I love the children that I drive, I drive to their schools and homes, but with the current pay scale, I cannot maintain a living without seeking other assistance. Because of the current atmosphere, I have no benefits available to me, nor do any of the bus drivers in Carroll County. Comparable counties around us offer benefits that we should be getting. Most of all, the counties around us are giving their bus drivers health insurance and sick days and paid holidays. Because transportation is not paying us comparable, many drivers are leaving for other counties, leaving many drivers not to be able to take off when they're sick or we have an emergency. With the recent COVID pandemic, it has highlighted this issue prominently. Respect for the drivers is lacking exponentially. I feel that the drivers are treated as lower-class employees. Hiring is based on the option of being flexible, when it is anything but. This is due to the lack of subs. During in-service trainings, we are told that we are important, that we're the first people that the children see, we're the first people, you know, that they get to see smiles and want, because sometimes they don't have good situations at home. We're counselors, we're referees, we're janitors, because we clean up when they get sick on the bus, all that kind of stuff. Much of this is done while we're driving. We cannot be late for work, we have to be on time without reservation to pick up or drop off. We cannot be late either way. Our children depend on it. The safety of the children are the most important priority. I and the other bus drivers cherish these little ones, and many times, we're the only ones that they can talk to. I thank you for the time to express my concerns, and I hope you will consider them deeply and understand that we are not out to make a lot of money, but we do respect, we do deserve the respect that is due to all of us. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. I'm sure you see a lot of yellow in our room, and we represent the contractors and our employees. Speaking on behalf of the Carroll County Contractors Association and our employees, we have been resilient throughout the COVID pandemic, navigating through the many challenges we were faced with. We have faithfully endeavored to fulfill our contracts daily, facing the challenge of a severe shortage of certified drivers and a decline in new hires. Throughout the history of busing in Carroll County, our family-owned businesses have been committed to safe, reliable, and economical transportation, with several of our businesses being multi-generational. We are representing our own companies, as well as many others who were unable to attend this evening, to request consideration for our reimbursement formula to be upgraded and brought to a current level of fair value. There are several factors in our reimbursement formula. As vendors with the largest financial assets in our personal and business names to service CCPS transportation needs, we are requesting that the per-vehicle allotment, which pays for our school buses, be increased. Since 2019 through the 2022 budget, this PVA has been modified without our consent and does not receive a Consumer Price Index annually. This PVA is locked in for the 12-year life of the bus. Our actual PVA is at a 2011 base level by a simplified formula. Obviously, 10 years later, costs have significantly increased for necessary items such as repairs, maintenance, insurance, fuel, mechanics, office staff, dispatchers, to name a few. In addition, contractors are paying more operational and overhead costs that have not been included in the reimbursement budget. For example, the new bus patrol installations, which began last year, have created numerous damages and continuing repairs to our buses. As school bus owners, we do not wish to sign a blanket contract allowing the Board to permit any additional aftermarket equipment in our buses without the contractor's input due to these situations. After all, these vehicles are owned and operated by the contractors. Our CDL school bus drivers meet some of the highest standards in the transportation industry with requirements that are very stringent and specialized. It has been our goal to retain these drivers and recruit many more applicants willing to accept the daily challenges we face. However, with these skills, their compensation must be at a higher rate competitive with other CDL positions, along with any possible benefits and or incentives to attract new applicants. We are pleased that we have a second meeting with our supervisors scheduled on June 16th to further discuss the financial commitments required to retain the local. 16th to further discuss the financial commitments required to retain the local school bus contractors. We ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Johnson.
Good evening. I'm Carol Johnson, owner of Johnson Bus Service LLC. At our garage, we house 51 school buses. I'm a second-generation school bus contractor. My mom started the business in 1965. The state developed our PVA when they stopped the block grant for funding of school transportation. We have taken four deductions in our PVA component of our formula since I've become a contractor, so we are going backwards. We are supposed to get a raise in our PVA the year that we replace the bus with a new bus, and then contrary to reasonable belief, is locked in for the 12 years of the bus with no other PVA increase for the life of the bus. But now, our PVA has been tied to the prime interest rate on October 1st of the year before we buy the bus in either July or August of the year it goes into service. This is in reaction and response to these legislative audits that have always approached the reimbursement process like school fleets are system-owned and thus should not realize a profit. In February 2010, the report from the PVA Work Group authorized by the MSDE, including input from James Dolan, Dave Reeves, and Chris Carter, all former supervisors or directors of people transportation of Carroll County, concluded that use of the prime interest rate should not be deficient for several reasons. Firstly, prime interest rate is the lowest rate an interest of a bank loan offered to a bank's preferred borrowers. The prime rate is not the rate in which contractors are able to finance their school buses. Finally, the prime rate is subject to fluctuations and could be at a level which would make it extremely difficult to operate a school bus enterprise. We went on to conclude that the amount of profit to be included in the PVA should reflect what a reasonable investor of a businessperson would expect on a long-term investment. We must provide a profit large enough to make operating a school bus attractive to a businessperson. To show you how we are losing ground, the bus this year purchased for 2021 PVA average is $18,414, $100 a year less than what we received in 2016. The bus that is ordered from this past fall for 2022 will receive $16,502, $668 a year less than what we received in 2012. But when I ordered my bus in last September, we had no idea what you planned to pay us. We have sent several email requests, funding requests about funding, only to be told that our budget was set in December.
Please finish the thoughts.
But we don't get a final answer about funding until May, but we have to give you a decision in writing on March 15th if we will be in service next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Lois Medicus. Oh, good. I did it right.
Good evening. My name is Lois Medicus. I was a math teacher at South Carroll High School for 30 years, retired from teaching in 2013, and now my sister and I are co-owners of Johnson Bus Service LLC. We operate 38 school buses, providing contracted services for CCPS. That business was originally started back in 1965 by our mother. In those earlier days, farmers would operate a bus to supplement their farm income. They were able to combine the incomes of both jobs to eke out a living, particularly if they drove the bus themselves and the school system did not have to house and maintain their own fleet. As time went on and bus contractors began to take on more than one contract, they developed a need to hire drivers. Again, in those early days, there were many women who were homemakers willing to work a job with consistent hours with their school-aged children. Their husbands were the breadwinners and had jobs that provided health coverage for their families. These women came to work in Cadillacs and other high-end cars with personalized license plates at our location and worked for a little extra money that they could call their own. Well, the times have certainly changed. Prior to the pandemic last year, the school bus industry nationwide was experiencing a serious driver shortage. Because of the precious cargo that we transport, our drivers must have and maintain exemplary driver records, submit to federal background checks, random drug and alcohol testing, and an annual DOT physical. They have to obtain a commercial driver's license and complete at least six hours of continuing in-service training annually. We ask them to report for split shifts, sometimes as much as three separate times each day. For all of this service and devotion, we pay them significantly less than their counterparts that drive trash trucks and haul blacktop and can offer them no health insurance benefits. Our drivers now are single moms, supporting families primarily on their own, and retirees that have health benefits either through their former jobs or Medicare. Prior to the pandemic, we lost drivers to other employers who could compensate their CDL holding status better and provide full benefits, including health insurance. We addressed this issue in October of 2019 at a BOE budget planning meeting. Our concerns seemed to be received warmly by CCPS central office staff present at the meeting, but unfortunately, we believe it got lost in the shuffle and budgetary priorities as the pandemic hit and our buses were parked. Now, there is a national worker shortage, and we are competing with the likes of Amazon that offers top pay and benefits and sign-on bonuses and doesn't even require a driver to possess a CDL. The bottom line is this: Our employees have ridden this roller coaster of a year along with each and every one of you. They have reported to work dependently despite the fact that many of them are in that high-risk age group for COVID-19 to provide the service to Carroll County children that they are so passionate about. Last summer, we were able to convince this board to support our business operations so that we would still be
Please finish your thoughts.
...in business when the school system was ready to reopen, and for that, we thank you. We've had one meeting so far with CCPS staff to discuss changes that need to be made in our reimbursement formula for 2022, 2023 school year and beyond. I'm sure that the need for health insurance will be on the table for that discussion. However, that's a year away. We've had a shortage of driver this year that have routinely required other contractors to be sub-drivers for double uploads. Next year, we hope things will be returning more to normal. I am respectfully requesting that money for health insurance benefits be made available to contractors in this year's reimbursement formula so that we may move forward in investigating a health insurance group administered by our local School Bus Contractors Association. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you. Irene Savage.
Hope I don't mess this up. I just want to start off by, instead of actually asking for a raise, I'm asking to get things back that have been taken away from us, basically the PVA. The PVA portion of our formula has been changed yet again. We're now being reversed at the same amount as we were 11 years ago. Because this amount stays with the bus for the 12 years' life, anybody that replaces a bus this year and can pay cash for that bus is taking a 27% reduction than what they were. If you're borrowing the funds as I do, of course, the reductions are much larger. I have three buses that will be retiring next year that I would like to definitely replace, but in order for me to replace these buses, I am going to need to come up with $10,000 a year per bus out of my own money above and beyond the PVA for these buses. And over five years, that will cost me $150,000 more than what the county is paying me. I don't think that's a good business decision, and I certainly know I can't afford it. Although we did get a 2.5% raise on our maintenance, that comes out to about 2.4 cents a mile, so it's about $440 a year on a bus that gets 100 miles a day. But with all the EPA components that have been added over the years to our maintenance, it has increased significantly. One example of this is our exhaust systems have gone from about $1,400 to $17,800 in a few short years. We now have DPFs, DOCs, EGRs, and so on on our motors. These items simply, they typically need to be replaced at least two times during the life of a bus, and they cost anywhere from $1,800 to $4,500 apiece. Typically, a bus, once it hits about seven or eight years of age, it starts requiring some higher dollar maintenance. I'm responsible for nine buses where I'm at, and out of the nine, right now, I've had four of them in the past year that I've had to replace injectors on. They're costing anywhere from $5,500 to $7,500, depending on what motor is in them. This cost does not include the labor. This expense alone would pretty much eat up anything that I would hope to make on a bus for that year. Contractors used to be able to do work on their buses themselves, but like everything else, those days are all now gone. You need to hire a professional to even diagnose and repair most of the issues, and the cost of the labor is somewhere between $100 and $180 an hour, usually at least a two-hour limit. I've checked with my suppliers on items that I have purchased over the last two years and compared the prices with this year's. Some things have stayed the same, and other things have increased anywhere from 2% to 76%. We have absolutely no benefit package. I have nothing I can offer my employees. I do the best that I can with them, and to my knowledge, we are the only group in the Board of Ed that has a very large overhead. We are taking the largest risk and don't receive much reward. It's been cut so far, so bad, that I'm fearing that I can no longer stay in this business.
Please finish the thoughts.
I have a wonderful, loyal, dedicated group of drivers and assistants, and I really would hate to have to tell my employees that they will no longer have a job because I cannot afford to replace these buses. Thank you very much.
Karen Withers.
Good evening. I'm Karen Withers. I teach at Cranberry Station Elementary School. I love my school. I work with some of the most dedicated and professional teachers that I've worked with in my 24-year career. My administrators treat me with professional respect, and I finally found my way back to the grade level I most enjoy and feel is my strength. I'm very happy in my day-to-day job here. However, the past year was eye-opening on many levels. It started last summer when some board members suggested that Carroll teachers were not professional enough to work from home during virtual instruction, and it got worse from there. The blatant disregard for COVID metrics and Health Department recommendations showed us that the agenda was to open the damn schools at any cost. We were going to listen to the loudest voice. While CCPS Pillar 4 states a goal of establishing a safe and healthy learning environment, it didn't feel like that was evidenced by some of the discussions and decisions this year. It was demoralizing to hear board members explain away guidelines with their own opinions as if they knew better than the CDC or the Health Department. It was frustrating to see the blatant disregard for legitimate concerns brought forward by people speaking at board meetings. And although you say that you have the right to correct false statements made during public participation, no one ever spoke up to correct false statements made by community members who stood at this podium pounding their fists and insisting that teachers were not working, that we were wanting a paycheck for doing nothing, and that we were trying to keep our students out of school. We worked harder than ever this year. What we wanted was for students to be safe and be brought back to school based on guidelines from the Health Department. We wanted a board that would support us and show some concern for our well-being. We wanted a board that would listen to advice from medical experts about how to navigate a pandemic and make decisions that prioritized the entire health and safety of the school community at large. But it seemed like there were different priorities here. They say when someone shows you who they are, you should believe them. I believe you. And the bottom line is, I don't trust you. While I enjoy my job here very much, I cannot in good conscience continue to let this board make decisions about the health and safety of me and my family. So for my own mental and physical health moving forward, I will be submitting my resignation from Carroll County Public Schools this week. And I know you'll probably forget about me when I walk out the door. It's okay. But I'll remember how I felt this year, and I hope that the teachers who stay get a fair contract.
Thank you. Brian Thompson.
Good evening. I'm a resident and father to four children who are all students in the Carroll County school system. I come here today to express my deep concern with how our administration has handled the alleged hate incident that occurred at Francis Scott Key High School, more specifically the email communications sent to parents and subsequent comments made to local media. Our administration could have used this unfortunate situation as a uniting moment to not only condone hate and bigotry, but also make clear that this is not representative of Carroll County students and our school system. Instead, this incident, while under investigation, was to use to broadly label our students as racist, us as parents to blame, and make broad claims that, quote, "we have much more to do as a community." When asked by the WBAL for comments on how our county is responding to our district's racial discrimination problem, instead of debunking this falsehood, the response instead was, quote, "we really need to see changes here." I cannot begin to describe how reckless, irresponsible, and damaging this sentiment is to our students. The parents of Carroll County reject the notion that our students and community are hateful and bigoted. Why was this incident used to paint a broad brush of our students? Is hate really on the rise in our schools? And how is hate even possible, arise and hate possible on the heels of a pandemic where students spent the majority of the past year isolated in their homes? If there's evidence that proves that hate is on the rise in our schools, our community will gladly stand with our administration and disavow it. But coming to this conclusion, prior to completing the investigation, absent providing any hard evidence, was done out of incompetence and cowtails to a broader narrative that's perpetrating our culture. Those that say we have much more work to do do not speak for our community. Regardless of the outcome of this investigation, the administration owes the students and the parents in our community an apology. But what was even more concerning was the fashionable buzzword used to describe the CCPS learning environment: equitable. Not equality, but equity. And this was done purposely, in the suggestion of national trends occurring within our school systems that have implemented or are flirting with the idea of implementing critical race theory. On behalf of a growing list of 150 residents and counting, let me be clear: Critical race theory, a theory that fights racism with racism, uses by people in power to divide us for political and financial gain, has absolutely no place in our school system. Our administration should be striving for an equal opportunity learning environment that enables each student, regardless of race, gender, or ethnicity, to receive the best possible education and maximize their individual potential, not striving for equitable outcome based on the very same attributes, which in itself requires racist means to achieve. We should be encouraging our students to be strong and resilient when encountering hate or bullying of any kind, not separating our kids into victimizers or victims, oppressed or oppressors, privileged or disadvantaged. We can all agree that hate and racism has no place in our schools, but do not dare use this incident, an incident that has yet to be verified or outcome made public, to characterize our students as racist. Do not allow social media and the court of public opinion to predetermine the outcome and paint a picture of our students, and do not use this as a cudgel to bring critical race theory into our schools. Instead, defend our students. Defend the truth. And if this incident is confirmed true, punish those who are responsible and treat it for what it is: an isolated incident. An isolated incident that is not a reflection of our students, our school system, and our county.
Thank you. Gary Foote.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Lockard, Commissioner Weaver, and everyone else in the audience. My name is Gary Foote. I have been teaching at South Carroll High School for the last 30 years, and this week at South Carroll, we said goodbye to teachers with over 100 years of combined experience. Yes, this should be a happy time for them. Everyone deserves a dignified retirement after a career of hard work. I unfortunately wonder if our retirees were retiring because it really was time, or if it was because this past year simply was too much to bear. Regardless, they will be missed, and in some cases, I am not sure who was going to be around to train the replacements. Of course, that is assuming replacements can be found. We must increasingly wonder where the next generation of educators will come from. The numbers in schools of education around the country do not look good, and the numbers quitting to do something else are not encouraging either. I have had colleagues tell me that if their children wish to go into teaching, they will refuse to pay the college tuition. I understand this is actually a national trend. Isn't it time to turn this around? Note to the board: Going to impasse with the teacher's contract is not the way to do it. What has always been true in education is even more fundamental today. When considering school-related factors for improving the quality of education, teachers matter most. High-quality teachers boost student achievement by a factor of two or three High-quality teachers boost student achievement by a factor of two or three, depending on what statistics you consider. We pay software engineers well over a hundred thousand dollars a year to develop the latest addictive computer application. Don't our teachers deserve more than a one-time bonus? We have always been a country that likes to pretend we are committed to high-quality education. Now is the time to stop pretending. Unfortunately, I know of no recent graduated senior in any of my classes who was interested in the education field. I would honestly have a difficult time recommending they give it any consideration. On top of all the other bad news that has been reported in this past year like no other, must we pile on with an ugly, with an ugly contract dispute? Not exactly the icing on the cake that anyone had in mind, and hardly a good omen for success moving forward.
Thank you. Chad Costella.
I'm not going to be long. I want to echo some of the concerns that Rebecca and Brian had before me. I have three students in the Carroll County school system. When I heard of this incident between Man Valley and FSK, I made phone calls, I sent emails on behalf of this young man because I have family who are of mixed races. I have children who I am concerned with and have had many discussions in regards to this type of situation to make sure that they don't partake in anything like this. It's been, I believe, a month or more since the investigation had started. We've not heard anything back on this. We did get the email out from the board stating the situation and acknowledging it, and I'm all for acknowledging a situation if it's real. I'm not saying that it's not, but the responsibility goes both ways. If we are being told that there's an issue and something's going on, we need to know about it, we need to face it head-on. But if there's an issue that has been falsely accused, that also is something that needs to be addressed. You know, our kids need to know that it's not right to go around and say false accusations about other people. You know, it's affected children in that school, it's affected the school system itself, the community, and the county as a whole. So I'm hoping that at some point here in the near future, we get some sort of a resolution and understanding of what actually took place, and if in fact it was false, that we are notified of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have a student at Winters Mill High School. I am also a person of color, as certainly are my children. I have concerns that the Board of Education is focusing on trying to lift a mask mandate and not dealing with the systemic racism that exists in this county and in this school system as a result. I think that there's been some sort of selective memory by people who have testified earlier. Our student representative, Ms. Mystery, Dr. Dorsey, made comments at that board meeting when that situation between Man Valley and FSK was raised, that maybe people listened, maybe heard, but didn't really listen to. That Ms. Mystery described students' experiences in Carroll County Public Schools, students of color, who experienced racism in the hallways, on the playing fields. Dr. Dorsey said, "This situation, sorting this out, cannot lie on the shoulders of Ms. Judy Jones. This has to be a school-wide, system-wide, you know, solution because it is systemic." No one's calling any one person racist. This is a systemic race issue, and critical race theory is being misunderstood. I am an attorney. I am a public interest and civil rights attorney. I have studied critical race theory. I have applied critical race theory in my legal practice. So the people who say they understand it, they haven't read it, they haven't studied it. Critical race theory is not about separating people by race, gender. It's actually looking at our history and recognizing that our history is more diverse. Me, I did not, no one, you know, I was taught World War II history, and I'm half Okinawan. And that Battle of Okinawa, the way it was taught to me in high school, was devastating because I had family members killed in that battle in Okinawa that were Okinawan, not American. But that wasn't recognized in the eighties, right? So I had to learn my Asian history on my own if I really wanted to understand where I came from, because it wasn't taught to me in the whitewashed history that was taught in the American school system. And African-American students, I can only imagine, because we start history when? You know, fourteen ninety-two. We should really be looking at sixteen nineteen, you know? When we started slavery, and how this has affected all systems and institutions in our country from that point forward. How our Fair Housing Act, we need because there is systemic racism in housing. How we need the Civil Rights Act because there's systemic racism in all sorts of things. Look at our voting rights. It's a disaster. This is why we need reform. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. It is so good to see everybody. I'm Catherine Hen, a kindergarten teacher at Manchester Elementary School, and I'm here tonight for many reasons, but I don't have enough time in the three minutes to tell you everything I want to. As of July first, I will be a retired teacher from Manchester Elementary School, and I want to use this time to practice what I teach: kindness and gratitude. I want to thank the families of Manchester Elementary who have allowed me to serve them as I introduce their children to the wonders of learning. To the, to past and present colleagues, and to my current kindergarten team, Mrs. DeAnthony, Ms. Almiger, Ms. Porter, and Mrs. Thomas, thank you for allowing me to be me and not making me conform my teaching and allowing me to do what is best for my students. To past and present board administrators, building administrators, supervisors, directors, chief, board members, and superintendents, thank you for letting me share my opinions, and I have had many, and for understanding that I always wanted the best for all of the students. To the current board, thank you. You have allowed me to use my voice to create change. You have heard my concerns and have done what you could to help me and the children. I hope you're listening to those educators tonight. To my former colleague, team member, mentor, and friend, Dr. Susan Getty, for always reminding me that the teacher in the classroom in front of the student is the expert and that I was not crazy. To my union brothers and sisters, thank you. If we ever needed to stand together and use our collective voice, it is now. COVID has changed education in ways we never thought would happen, and we must work together to make these changes good for all of our students. To the CCA leadership team, President Teresa Basler McCullough, Vice President Kelly McDonough, Treasurer Josh Davidson, and Secretary Heather Goodhart, thank you for your hours of committed work to keep the association active, its members involved, and working to make sure schools are safe for educators and children. So, why am I retiring? I have had enough. I can't continue to do more. I can't continue to be the nurse, the counselor, the assistant, and the teacher. I started in this county as a volunteer in nineteen eighty-nine. I've worked as a substitute, an hourly employee, and I worked as a teacher under a grant. I did that for twelve years, but when I was given a contract, none of those years counted. I started on step one. Thirty-two years later, I'm leaving this county with only twenty years of service, and on step thirteen. Yep, I'm leaving on step thirteen. Why? Because this county does not respect its educators. You depend on teachers who are rooted and committed to this county to stay and work for far less than what they are worth. It is time for you to show your gratitude to the educators of Carroll County and to provide them with the steps and cost of living increase they deserve. We are done with bonuses. If there was ever a time to be kind to teachers, to show your appreciation for their dedication and commitment, it is now. Please stop the impasse and bring an offer to the table that shows you truly, truly respect the educators.
Thank you. Ryan Hellman.
Good evening, school board members, county advisors, executives. Tonight, I'm going to introduce myself. My name is Rodney Morris. I'm the new president of the Carroll County branch of the NAACP. Just by mentioning that name will mean put people on the defense. But what I'm here to talk about tonight is basically about inclusion. Now, I've heard the citizens internally, your workers complaining about a facet of issues. Now, the minority advisors, educators, students, their voices are not being heard. And they have similar complaints, but their complaints are doubly the size of what's going on with the individuals that spoke tonight. Racism is alive and well in Carroll County. Why we're denying that is the first problem. We have to address that racism does exist, and minorities need to be heard. When decisions are made based on opinions and not the facts, it makes it that much harder for people to be heard. This critical race theory idea, the word alone, the name, is causing others to fear, something that they don't understand. As educators, we should want others to listen and learn the facts. We have to deal with the facts. If there's some truth in that theory, then let's teach our students how to think critically and get all the information. Our opinions matter, but they're being dismissed because we're the minority. The incident that occurred at Man Valley and FSK, I have a family member that goes there, and what he told me, yes, it's true. He can believe that it occurred because it occurs often, and nobody's calling anybody a racist. You made a statement, let's investigate it. But we cannot allow time to go ahead and fester and continue to allow these things to continue to occur, because right now, the student that experienced this racism feels that there's no action being taken, even though there's a letter went out, an email went out, nothing's being done. And I have a whole lot I could speak to the board about, but I want the board to understand that all opinions matter, and we have to start listening to the minority students in this county. Even though it's a small percentage, we still have to listen, and the board has to make decisions based on facts, not opinions, not how you feel, but on the facts that are generated to the board. And like I said, I have a whole lot I can speak on, and I didn't want my first meeting to the board to be of a negative connotation. I wanted to introduce myself so that you all know who I am and that we are listening to our students, your staff, and the educators that work for you, and that we're trying, hopefully, we can work together to try to curtail some of these issues. But we can't move forward if there's so much resistance to change. And words alone has put a lot of people on the defense, because nobody's accusing anyone of being a racist. But we have to acknowledge that racism does exist. So, being that said, my time is up, I'm sorry, but I would love to
Thank you.
...to have this conversation with the board again, and hopefully I'll have an opportunity in the near future.
Thank you. Stephanie Brown.
She just got her second dose, she didn't want to be far from you, but I... You guys all know Bella. Hi, you guys all know who I am. I'm Stephanie Brown. I email you almost daily lately. I want to thank you for inviting me tonight, Mr. Kyler. I wanted to make sure you didn't miss me at this meeting like the last one. I want to address the elephant in the room. Which elephant, you may ask? Could it be the racism and hatred that have been swept under the carpet? The teachers' contracts? How about the attempt at removing masks in our classrooms before the end of the school year? No, not those elephants. The elephant I wish to address is the lies and misinformation, as well as ignorance and disdain that at least one of you shows to all that disagree with your perspective. You have two members on your board that have shown disrespect and disdain for the rest of you. They lied to you, withheld information, and called a meeting two nights ago on false pretenses. These members have lied to us all in their attempts to protect themselves. They need to be dealt with. They need to be censured by you, the board. They need to be stripped of their titles because they do not display the conduct that your very own handbook states is required. Your core values, right there on the wall. Fairness, honesty, and respect. They actually need to step down, do the right thing, you two. You should both remove yourself from office. If they do not choose to do the right thing, which I expect they will not, it is up to the rest of you, the rest of the board, to do something. They not only disregard us, the constituents, they disregard you, their fellow board members. They disregard each other, especially Mr. Kyler, who has stated to me that Marcia enjoys throwing her new title around. I have it. You know I have screenshots, Mr. Kyler. I could spend hours discussing how Mr. Kyler speaks to constituents and about anyone that does not agree with him, but I won't. You've all seen it from me already. It is up to you on the board, deal with these two members of your board, or be complicit in their actions.
Thank you. And I think that's the last citizen for here for now, so employee groups.
Good evening, Superintendent Lockard, members of the Board of Education, and Commissioner Weaver. I'm Teresa Basler McCullough, President of the Carroll County Education Association, who represents the teachers, counselors, RNs, speech-language pathologists, OTs, and PTs who want to be heard. Listen and silent have the same letters for a reason. We know that this has been the most difficult year in the history of the Carroll County Public School System, and our bargaining group was a huge part in making it work for our students. We know that one-time money can be used for pensionable compensation. We know that actions speak louder than words. Praise is not a raise.
Thank you. Anyone else from bargaining units?
All right, now we may go forward with the COVID-19 updates. And tonight, we have Maggie.
All right, no Ed.
That's fine. But so glad to see you.
Good to see you as well, in person. I'm glad that I remembered to ask if I should be here in person, so
That's wonderful.
It's very exciting. So, good evening, board members, Dr. Lockard and Commissioner Weaver. I just want to share my regrets from Mr. Singer, who's attending also an in-person meeting with the health officers from across the state today for the first time in over a year, so very excited to be able to participate in that. I'm not I'm not going to take long. I'm just going to give you a brief data overview. And here's our first graph, and I'm sure you'll be excited to see. Of all the rainbow graphs that I have brought to you over the past year, I think this is the first time we are actually in the green section. So, as you can see, this is based on the new CDC guidance. Remember, we had the old CDC guidance and several rainbow graphs. This is the new guidance that the commissioners had asked us to put together, this graph. So, it reflects two different, well, really, one measure is the total cases per week, which is a little confusing because it's not that usual case number that's on the state website. But it's based on how many cases we have every week. And you can see that's really gone down into, as I said, the green. So, we're really very, very low. It's still considered moderate, but we're so close to, you know, if you round down just a little bit, it would almost be in the low. So, the low goes up to, it goes up to nine. So, we're very close to low. And it's in the green. So, we're very excited about that. Our positivity rate has also gone down. It was below one, now it's up a little bit above one, so it's gone back up a little bit. But it's still very low. So, we're really pleased to see those numbers going down. And, you know, we really want to thank everybody who's gotten vaccinated. We really think that, you know, in large part, it's due to the effectiveness of the vaccines that we have available. So, we're really excited to see that really coming to life in our graphs. Next slide, please. So, these next graphs, we'll just go through quickly. You've seen them all, and it's just so you can kind of compare how they've sloped downward. This one, I'll just note on 5.9, there's a real kind of increase in the probable cases. That was just due to a lab report, a bunch of lab reports that were submitted. So, this is, as you can see, is going down. Our case levels have been really low the last couple of weeks, and they continue to be really low. Next graph, please. And this is the 14-day rolling average, which kind of smooths that out. But this is also really showing a really significant decrease. And here, this is just a quick graph of the rates in each age group. And you can also, so we can just compare and kind of tease out what's going on in each age group. And you can see here, right now, they're all going down, which is a great thing to see. This, also very exciting, hospitalizations have finally gone down. As you know, from our many talks, hospitalizations and deaths do lag cases. And so, we're finally seeing the results of our lower case rate by seeing these lower hospitalization numbers. And the hospital is seeing lower numbers of COVID patients. And the next graph, quickly, this has not changed much over time, but just continues to reflect that, you know, these, most of the serious cases, the hospitalizations and deaths have occurred in older adults, but there still have been some in younger adults and in children. And so, we just want to kind of continue to show that in this graph. And the next graph is the deaths by week. And the last two weeks, we have not had any community deaths or any facility deaths. So, we're very excited about that as well. Again, that lags the cases, and we're excited to see that coming down. I did want to mention that as we move into, you know, this kind of new period where we're, you know, maskless in many places and we're able to do a lot more things, screening, testing, and contact tracing continue to be very important. So, you know, especially among those who are not yet vaccinated, people with COVID symptoms need to stay home, even if you have been vaccinated, just, you know, just to be sure. That's, you know, it's just common sense. You know, there are breakthrough cases and, you know, and there are variants. And so, folks should just remember that if you have COVID symptoms, you should stay home and accept to get testing or medical care. Testing. So, the Health Department's testing site did close in late May at the Ag Center. But testing is still available in several places throughout the county, so it's pretty easy to access testing. And the school, I believe, is still going to have testing available when school is in session. So, there'll be a little bit of a break while you're taking a break. But once summer session starts up again, you'll have testing available at the school. So, that's a great, convenient way for folks to access testing. And contact tracing, for now, is still going to be ongoing as well. Hopefully, it'll be a lot quieter than it's been in past months. But we'll still continue to do contact tracing. So, if there is, if there are exposures in the school system or elsewhere, we'll continue to follow up with those and make sure that those folks know that they've been exposed. Next slide. So, this is just kind of noting how many vaccines we've given throughout the community. We're over 50,000, so that's another exciting milestone for us. That's total doses administered, so we're really pleased about that. Next slide. So, it's just a few vaccination slides. So, this table shows the percentage of the total population, including children, who are vaccinated. So, it's not comparable to that state's 70%, but it does show that the total, the total of fully vaccinated is the lower line, and the number that have received at least one dose is the upper line. And then, this is vaccinated by age group. Not surprising, we're excited. We've reached 90% of our 65 and up population, and it kind of goes down from there. So, we're still looking for some of those younger folks to get vaccinated and help protect themselves and others. Here's a graph broken down by race and ethnicity. The only age group, for some reason, we could get was 20 and up. But this shows you, we're continuing to look at this data to make sure that we're reaching all the groups in our county. And we still are struggling a little bit with our Hispanic population, so we're continuing to try to do outreach to that group in particular. I just wanted to let everybody know, our vaccination clinics continue at the town mall. Those are primarily Moderna, and they're open to first and second doses. Even if you've gotten your first dose somewhere else, we can be much, much more free and easy with vaccines now. We have plenty of supply. And I also wanted to note, we do have our two Pfizer clinics that we coordinated with the school system and that are targeting our 12- to 17-year-olds. We had our second, first second-dose clinic for Pfizer today. That was over 1,000 kids getting their second vaccine. And now, we have a second second-dose clinic next Wednesday, the 16th, from 2:00 to 7:00 at the town mall. And there is a little bit of room for first doses there. So, if folks have not gotten their first dose yet, wanted to wait till the end of school, it's a great way. School will be over, so if folks are welcome to come out and have their kids vaccinated, get their first dose at that clinic. And all the information is on our website. And I just wanted to mention that we will also be at events this summer, finally, out and about. So, we'll have our Health on Wheels vaccination team out. We're starting with food truck, Sunday Fun Day at the Farm Museum this weekend. We're planning to go to the 4H Fair in August, and we'll be at some other locations in between there. So, hope to see folks out there as well. And last but not least, I wanted to share our thanks for our GoVax ambassadors, some of whom are from the school system. We are just sharing these across our social media platforms and other media platforms to let folks know that there are a lot of people in the county who have gotten vaccinated and who, you know, feel comfortable sharing that with others and want to encourage others to get vaccinated and learn more about it. So, we have lots of other ambassadors throughout the county, but I just wanted to highlight these two that you know very well. So, that's really, that's it for my updates. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Kyler.
Yes. I think, and you'll tell me if I'm wrong, the governor's emergency and the executive order, I think, is through July 1st. Yeah.
That's an excellent question. I actually don't know exactly how long they're through. In general, the executive order is just updated as needed.
Yes. Well, let's assume it is. Will that, if he doesn't extend it, he does, does any of that affect anything you guys are doing? You'll continue vaccinating, you'll continue contact tracing. That doesn't affect what you guys do directly, correct?
That's an excellent question. So, there are state of emergency at the state level, and there's a state of emergency at the county level. And those are, you know, in place, as you know, to sort of make certain services and things available and just kind of help facilitate things. But really, we won't change what we're doing. We're going to do what the community needs. So, you know, we're already pulling back and expanding, you know, additional services, trying to open things, open the building at the Health Department. And so, some of us are, you know, getting away from our COVID duties, but only because there isn't as much need. But we'll continue to monitor things. I did want to mention, actually, so we'll continue to monitor this data. It's available on our website. We update it a couple of times a week. You know, we continue to update the commissioners once a week with those graphs and things like that. So, we're going to continue to monitor. We're going to continue to watch. We don't really know what to expect. We've never been through a full pandemic before like this in our lifetimes. So, we're going to continue to monitor. We're going to continue to contact trace as long as it's needed. We're going to continue to vaccinate as long as it's needed. So, we'll continue to offer all those services and to monitor the data and the cases and things like that. And, you know, provide updates as needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a better answer than Ed would have given.
Any other comments?
Is he listening?
If I might add, June 14th is the county's. It's in the state of emergency till June 14th, countywide.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Sevigny.
While we're on the subject and while we have our esteemed special guest, I wanted to just talk about, so the meeting that we had on Monday night to send the resolution to the governor. If they were to do something, if they were to change the executive order.
Correct.
Then, I think that, you know, how we would implement a change to the mask situation.
Yes.
Isn't necessarily something that the Board of Ed should get involved in the details of that. I was thinking that I wanted to propose that, since, Dr. Lockard, you said that you were in favor of it, given the community spread, the levels, the very low levels that we're at right now, that you were in favor of it, and Mr. Singer was in favor of it. So, I was thinking that we would give that authority to Dr. Lockard because that's more of an operational item, right? That you would have the flexibility to implement it should something change at the governor level with the executive order.
Correct. I'll reiterate what you just said, Ms. Sevigny. I concurred with Mr. Singer at the previous meeting, looking at the, being in the low range coupled with the governor releasing that as part of the executive order. I would assume then, just like we did with mask outdoors, we would then go ahead and communicate with our staff and our communities that that is now optional if that becomes, in fact, out of the executive order, et cetera. So, yes, I don't know that we'd need another meeting. I heard the board loud and clear. We would simply communicate that is now, it's optional, as we discussed in our school budgets.
And so, if, let's say that you were right, Mr. Kyler, that, let's say they don't change it through, but the executive order is only valid through July 1st. Does that mean, as of July 1st, if he doesn't renew the executive order, that it is no longer in effect? And then, we would have the ability to not make, or to make masks optional for summer recovery learning?
So, if I can, if I may, you can certainly correct me. I believe the state of emergency is that, you know, that state of emergency that's put in place that allows FEMA and MEMA and other assets to be deployed in order to meet the needs of the disaster that you're addressing, but that the executive order is separate and doesn't have an expiration date, per se. I believe it's just, you know, and as you know, modified many times. If you look at it, it has a paragraph about this long of dates. And so, I believe that just stands until it's modified.
Okay.
Okay.
So, what we should look at is if the governor modifies that, then we're at the step.
Correct. Correct. And I would agree. I think Ed did indeed say to me that he, you know, he concurs that still, he, if the executive order is amended so that masks are not required in schools, and if the levels remain as low as they are now, he feel, he would feel comfortable removing masks. And of course, as I said, we would really want to continue to look at the data. So, just kind of continue to keep an eye on it, hoping that it will continue its downward trend and stay in the green, but just to keep an eye on it. And also, to just make sure that that screening, testing, and contact tracing continues for the time being.
Well, thank you, because this was good news tonight. That downward trend looks fantastic, and thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Now, it is 6:30. Mr. Williams, do we have anyone else out there?
There's someone on the way.
Oh.
I guess they were targeting where you were at on the agenda.
Oh. They might have just arrived? Do you want, it's, do you want to do that next? Sure. Okay. She will fill her card out, and then she may come up, and we will continue. It's past 6:30 to do this second set of citizen participation. Thank you.
Amy Gilfer.
Thank you. Hello. I've just come from the ball field, so this might be a good time to implement public distance, six-foot distancing. So, I am here. Good evening, everyone. I am here as a member of the Frances Scott Key community. Our fourth child just graduated last week, and it has been a wonderful experience. But for the last month of school, it has left us feeling a little bit less than, if you will. It began with the morning announcement by our administration, followed by an email from Dr. Lockard, which alerted us of an alleged racial incident, which had occurred during a lacrosse game earlier in the week. And there was also an email from our administration. Yes, words were used to say that the incident would be investigated, but the impression was very clear to me that an inclusive environment for all students necessarily means we begin with an assumption that racism exists, but not the assumption that all students are innocent until proven guilty. It was truly alarming to me. Neither was it mentioned that truthfulness and integrity are also essential for a safe learning environment for all students. Our school system clearly does not tolerate a whole host of behaviors as indicated by two distinct non-discrimination statements at the end of all your emails. Does that mean that bad things never happen? Sadly, no, and no one school has the corner on stupidity or virtue. But I was sick to my stomach at the growing rush to judgment that I felt was forming within the school system, as well as in social media. FSK was the brunt of a lot of horrible posts and snaps. And yes, it was upsetting and distracting to my daughter, as well as a lot of students and families in our community. When you know the character and reputation of those involved, things just weren't lining up. All key students were being labeled with one broad stroke of judgment. Innocent until proven guilty is true, said one parent on social media, except in this case. If something was said, it did need to be addressed, absolutely. I now know, though, that after several weeks of disruption, that the players were pulled aside and told that none of the charges could be verified. And no mention was made of the other student who made the claim either. Yet, there is new curriculum with guiding conversations and experiences for these athletes to go through. That's troubling to me. But since the athletes have been cleared, I think it's critical to exonerate the players, the parents, and their families publicly, as well as our school community. And I'd like to recommend a positive step, as a positive step, that Michael Duffy considered creating a social media policy for athletes that the athletes themselves would help develop. And I'd also like to recommend that the school system look at curriculum and concepts regarding developmental relationships, which are the key for students to build healthy relationships. These come from the Search Institute, as well as Harvard Human Flourishing Study. Defaulting to social media to solve conflict does not work. But when we help students connect to family, school, and community, we can equip them with things to avoid things like we've seen in the last month. And I would be more than happy to help with those conversations. And I hope that you would consider me an ally in your cause. Thank you so much.
Yes, hello. Oh, can you hear me? Yes, I think some of you read my email that I sent last week. And I got a response from Donna Sevigny and Tara Bataiglia. Thank you. Your email was very important. And also, Kenneth Kyler. So, thank you for responding to my email. And I realize that when it comes to the mask mandate, that it's really comes, you know, it's, there's, you know, there's sort of a hierarchy. And that you were probably at the direction of the governor on the mask mandate. But I do want to reiterate that my son did suffer physical, you know, he couldn't breathe, and he felt sick because he had to wear the mask and was in the nurse's office. And the nurse and I had a discussion about it, and we both agreed that this, that the mask was a contributing factor to my son feeling unwell. And I will also add to that, that I actually took my son out of school specifically because I did not want him to wear masks. And so, we tried homeschooling in the fall for a number of months, simply because with my background in, on the eastern shore with factory farming and the air quality and the studies that I've read about air quality and children particularly, I was convinced that no child should be wearing a mask all day and that it is really unhealthy. It's not good for their brain development or their lung development as well. So, I would like to say thank you to those of you who are actively pushing to get this mask mandate lifted. Even though school is practically over, I'm hoping that, you know, the children might have a reprieve for. I'm hoping that, you know, the children might have a reprieve for one or two days before school's out. So, thank you very much.
If I can, I would like to make one comment. No, not, yeah, and not, and not reference on what you just said, but a couple people this evening violated our guidelines, and a couple questioned why we don't correct others. And I just want to make a statement. I think since I've been on the board, and since I've been the one doing this, we're very liberal with the time because we value public comment. And when do you cross into untruths versus opinions versus this side and that side? I don't think, unless something's blatant, we want to sit here and say, well, that guy didn't tell the truth, and that guy did, and I just don't think we want to do that. And I just, I wanted everybody to hear that, that when somebody comes up there and they're listening and they disagree with it, we're not going to correct that guy any more than we're going to correct the one you do agree with. And I just, I just wanted to make that statement about the citizen participation, and not reflect it to any of the last two that are still here.
Mr. Kyler, I just wanted to say, you know, I appreciate those comments from you. You know, we do want to be careful because we don't want to be accused of canceling out others and then telling people that they can't speak and silencing them. So, you know, I know we definitely want to be careful with that.
And we have one more that just has shown up.
And I appreciate your comments as well, Mr. Kyler, because there was certainly a speaker tonight who was presenting opinion as fact, and I definitely disagreed with some of those comments, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to address that, you know, directly in the boardroom because we do want to hear feedback from our citizens during citizen participation.
Mr. Williams, this will be the last one because we need to move on. Thank you.
Megan? Last but not least.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I don't have anything prepared. The reason I am here is in response to an email I received on May 17th regarding an alleged incident, I believe, that happened between students at two high schools. The details weren't really shared, but what concerned me as a parent of a daughter who plays three sports at Westminster High School is that it was assumed that all student athletes in Carroll County public schools have work to do. What does that mean? Are you assuming that my daughter is racist because of the color of her skin? Did she do something wrong? Because I know my daughter. And Dr. Lockard, your email really upset me because she is a good kid, and she has been raised to know that we are all made in God's likeness, that we are all Americans, and that's what we, we judge people in the content of their character and on nothing else. And so for you to say that my daughter, as a student athlete, needs to go to additional training, or whatever else you have in store for next school year, infuriated me. So tonight, I would like to ask the board that before training is implemented for our student athletes next year, that it's vetted with the board. Because I feel like agendas are being pushed by central office that aren't in line with the values citizens of Carroll County hold. And without it being vetted through the board, agendas and, agendas will be pushed, and indoctrination will happen with our children, and I'm not okay with that. I have raised my kids better than this, and they deserve that respect. And for that assumption to be made, that they aren't respectful, is not okay. And I would like an apology sent, just like the email was sent out, that you can do better. I want an email apologizing for that statement. I want announcements at the high school sports apologizing for that statement, or the statement on local TV that we still have work to do. I would like an apology, because I don't think you can take one isolated incident and paint all of Carroll County with such a broad brush. And I fully resent that May 17th email. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our citizen participation, and now we will move on to board member activities and correspondence. Who would like to go first?
I'll go very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Due to the time, I'll do one next month.
Okay. Ms. Sevigney?
I'll follow suit. Just want to say, I had a couple of activities this month, but it was just the audit committee meeting, which went very well, given the fact that I think almost every single one of the committee members was brand new at this meeting. So that was, but it was still a very productive meeting. And the other was two graduation ceremonies that I had the pleasure and honor of attending. I got to attend Century and South Carroll this year, and it was just, it was really great to see all the students there and, you know, having the opportunity to celebrate, you know, the graduation. It's such a pinnacle of their, of their high school careers, and it was just, it was a great forum, you know, having it at the Ag Center. And it was just so great to have everybody there together for such a momentous occasion. So just want to thank the principals. I want to thank central office staff. I know so much hard work and effort went into making sure that graduations were as special as they could possibly be this year. So, thank you, everyone.
Ms. Bataglia?
I'll make it quite quick. I just want to congratulate all of our seniors. Looking back, you know, it's one thing that you always remember, no matter how old you get, considering yesterday was my, been 25 years since I walked the stage at Westminster High School. So I do want to congratulate all of our seniors. I'm just continuing my college studies, and anybody that is in 4H, tomorrow is the last day for your entries, so get them in for the Carroll County 4H fair.
Thank you. Dr. Dorsey?
Okay, thank you. On May 13th, I attended an education that is multicultural committee meeting. On the 14th and 21st of May, I also attended a conference on understanding history, acknowledging current issues, and addressing future implications. On the 18th of May, I attended the virtual 2021 economic update, which was sponsored by the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce. May 24th, I participated in Mabe's Ad Hoc Equity Committee Meeting, where we continued to prepare a workbook that will be used by local boards throughout the state of Maryland for us to really gain a deeper understanding of our work. On May 25th, I was the guest speaker for Mrs. Eccles Teacher Academy of Maryland class, and I shared information about the role of school board members. And it was just a great opportunity. I was in person with the four students who were in the class, and I think we had maybe about nine or 10 who were online. So again, I had that experience of dealing with students virtually, as well as in person, and it was a great session, and it was very rewarding for me because I had some former students from Friendship Valley who were a part of that academy class. So I thank Mrs. Eccles and her students for giving me that opportunity. On the 26th of May, I attended a retirement celebration for Mr. Hill, and I enjoyed that and reminiscing through the years what his career had been like. On the 27th of May, I attended a virtual equity and inclusion meeting at Friendship Valley Elementary School. And on the 1st, 2nd, and 3rd of June, I attended graduations for Liberty High School, Winters Mill High School, and Westminster High School. And I agree, Ms. Sevigney, it was great to have the in-person graduations. I think the venue was adequate for the ceremonies, and again, it was just very rewarding to see all of the students and to hear that really that was their first time really back together, all together as a class for quite a while. So again, congratulations and best wishes to all of our 2021 graduates, and certainly I thank the administrators and Mr. King and everyone who was involved, and certainly Dr. Lockard, for being involved in helping to make sure that we celebrate it with our seniors in person this year. So again, thanks very much, and those were very rewarding to attend as well.
Devangie?
Good evening, everyone. This meeting really brings me back full circle. It's been exactly one year since I was seated on the board, and it was definitely a year filled with challenges and changes, but I'm truly looking forward to the next year on the board as well. The seniors graduated. Sincere congratulations to the class of 2021. Their senior year was truly unlike any other, but they got through it, so congrats to them. June is LGBTQ plus pride month, and I just wanted to say to the entire community, happy pride. I encourage everyone in the community and on the board to learn more about the community this month, their challenges, their struggles, and their history. And I want every student of the community in our school system to know that they are loved and accepted. And all, I hope everyone has a wonderful summer. We truly deserve this summer.
Thank you. Mr. Kyler?
And even though I said I wasn't going to say anything, I don't want a short change. I was at Francis Scott Key's graduation, and the principal, the two assistant principals did a great job. It flowed quickly and smoothly, and thank you to all of you that made those. It was so nice to see everybody. That's a day they're all smiling and happy, and life's wonderful, and that was a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Last week, we held seven high school graduation ceremonies at Shipley Arena here in Westminster. As a school system, we are so grateful that we were able to give our graduates a traditional and meaningful graduation. Each of the ceremonies were beautifully done, and we received a lot of positive comments, and we really have, people really enjoyed the Ag Center, starting right out the bat with the parking, and that was, you know, we've heard a lot of comments. For these ceremonies to run smoothly, as it took months of planning and coordination, staff, community, and business organization, I would like to take a minute to sincerely thank the people who made this happen. Please bear with me. First of all, I would like to thank the principals, assistant principals, graduation coordinators, building supervisors, and we cannot forget our custodians. They drive truckloads of things that need to be brought over from each individual high school back and forth. A special thank you to Cindy McKay, our chief of schools, and Eric King, director of high schools, as well as Sandy Currents. Sandy is unbelievable. She has been to probably more graduations than all of us for helping out. Mr. King's administrative assistant. The communication office, Pat Flattery, Brenda Bowers, and Carrie Gaddis. Carl Streak, director of student services. Dwayne Williams and Curtis Pierce from our school security and the sheriff's office. Terri Malloy, athletic director of Westminster High School and the career and tech center. And the CCPS AV and maintenance staff. AV Solutions and Heather Cookedile and Ruben Vilagus from Shipley Arena. And a special thanks, we cannot do this without Richard Turner and his staff at the community media center, made it possible for everyone attending graduation to be a part of the ceremony. And also, I would like to thank Gateway. I also went to the transition graduation and to Carroll Springs. They were very unique, but they were all absolutely wonderful, and thank you, Dr. Lockard. You got that speech down each time for each graduating class. Thank you. And now it's your turn.
Okay, very good. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to begin by congratulating Lucinda Deal. Lucinda's a junior at Winters Mill High School. She's participating in the World Trade Center Institute's Youth Diplomats Program. This program helps 30 high school juniors and seniors take their first steps toward becoming global citizens. The students meet one Saturday a month to explore topics in global affairs and diplomacy. They also build their leadership and cross-cultural communication skills through international, through interactions with professionals and international visitors. The program also incorporates components such as creative projects, opportunities for academic reflection, and a virtual dinner with international families. Upon completion of the program, their participants will be recognized as Albrecht Fellows, so congratulations to Lucinda. I also want to congratulate two members of our student services staff who received the Message of Hope Award from Carroll County State's Attorney, Brian D. Leonardo, at the Sixth Annual Drug Overdose and Prevention Vigil in May. Judy Klinger, supervisor of school counseling, was instrumental in developing the Handle with Care program in Carroll County. She's the school system contact for local and state law enforcement agencies to report criminal incidents within the community in which students may be involved in some way. When an incident's reported, Judy is in immediate contact with school administrators and counselors to make them aware that a student has been exposed to trauma and/or violence. With this information, the school counselor ensures that students, that the student receives appropriate interventions and support to ultimately help them achieve success. Kelly Snyder, pupil personnel worker, worked with the Office of the State's Attorneys, Youth Service Bureau, and the Douglas E. Metz Foundation to plan and provide a three-day summer camp for students who have been impacted by addiction-related trauma and loss. It's called Camp Thrive, and it's in its third year, and it provides a supportive environment where students can build skills in coping and stress management, as well as share with others who have experienced similar challenges. Kelly's been an integral part of the creation and success of Camp Thrive and works tirelessly throughout the school year to provide this three-day camp experience over the summer. So we want to congratulate Judy and Kelly, and we also want to say best, best wishes to Judy on her upcoming retirement. As you've heard tonight, it was my great pleasure to attend all of our high school graduations last week, as well as the ceremonies for Gateway, Carroll Springs, and the best program at Westminster High School. We're very proud of each and every one of our 1,960 graduates and wish them nothing but the best. And Marcia stole my thunder for all of the people to thank, so thank you for doing that. Finally, next Tuesday, June 15th, will be the last day of school for students. It's an early dismissal that day as well. I'd like to thank our students, our employees, and our families for all they've done this year to meet and rise above the many challenges that were presented. I hope everybody enjoys the summer, and I look forward to seeing everyone in person five days a week in September. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lockard. There are no presentations, and then we are going to move on to reports. Academic Recovery Compensation and Extended School Year Services Update Report.
Thank you. And we're going to have Mr. Anderson provide a brief update. We've been coming to you since February, I think. Yep, and, and he has a brief update as that is less than a month away now.
Good evening, board members. Commissioner Weaver. In regards to updates in the next iteration of the Recovery and Compensatory Services update for this summer, if you look at the actual table of contents, you'll see two areas highlighted, operations and schools, and at the very bottom, compensatory services. I'm pleased to share with everyone this evening that we have 54% of our students who have been invited will be attending our recovery program this summer. That can be found on page five now within the document. You can see the number of students by school that were invited, number of acceptances and declinations, and then also folks that we did not receive a response from. We recently had a meeting this week, as it's our responsibility to start looking and planning for extended learning opportunities in the fall that will continue with our recovery and compensatory efforts. And a lot of these students, we anticipate being also invited and hopefully continuing with additional services. At the bottom of the table contents, on page 32, to give you an update, I'm pleased to share with you that Mr. Shockney and his team, we are, have reported that we are at about 1,200, over 1,200 students that are going to be receiving compensatory services or extended school year services, which brings us to a grand total of nearly 4,000 students this summer. So it's been a major effort across the entire school system. At this time, I just want to thank the school principals and administrators for all their works and doing the alignment of classes for this summer. And next comes a significant amount of accountability from the state of Maryland as we go ahead and implement this program. We'll be looking at our, obviously, our efficacy and the actual progress that our students make this summer. The actual pre-assessments are being done, you know, as we speak, so over the next couple of days, they'll be completing that and getting that data into our system.
Questions, comments? Mr. Kyler?
And you and I talked before about the no responses and the follow-ups, and I'm sure it's all going on, but for the benefit of anybody still listening, it's not too late, right? That they're still following up. It's not like this is the total number and it's final. There's, you're open to more.
Yeah, I'd like to say it's never too late. We have set a cutoff in regards to our technical solution as it relates to transportation, but as Mr. King will tell you, there's a number of students at high school where we'll be learning over the next week or two who's going to have to come in for credit recovery, and I want to thank Mike Hardesty and Jen Seashell for their work to make that. for their work to make that possible for these kids at the last minute, to get them assigned to a course. And then, obviously, transportation to get them into school each day. So it's been a collaborative effort.
Ms. Savigny.
I just want to say thank you for this. This is very exciting about the number of students that we're going to be able to reach this summer. And you had reported last time about the number of teachers and assistants that we were able to get to come in, and it was looking like we would have single-digit class sizes for most of these groups. Is that still looking like the case?
So it's, I'll be completely honest with you. In some places, it is, and some places, it isn't. It's highly reliant on the actual intake that we're getting at each building. In some classes, you know, it's 12, 13. I think I saw some of the elementary classes. In some, in some other places, it'll be a bit smaller. But that's the reality of what we're facing right now, is having the appropriate staff to go ahead and align to the actual number of students that we have. The good news is we have kids that want to come in, right? And so just having the staff available to do it is always a challenge. But I do want to appreciate the board's endorsement of incentivizing staff members to take part in this summer. And we're very, very appreciative of all the staff that are able to do it. It's not going to be a typical class. It's not going to be 28 to 1, thank goodness. But it's not also going to be where, Ms. Herbert was saying that, you know, can we get it to 3 to 1? That's not possible right now. When we get to the fall, though, it is a state mandate that it has to be 4 to 1.
Yes, it does.
And so that's something that we've already started conversing about. And that's a tutoring opportunity.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Savigny.
Sorry, I just wanted to give other folks a chance if they have something.
That's okay.
But the 893 people, or at least that's what's, you know, showing on the chart, that said no. I mean, those are folks that were thinking needed summer recovery learning. For whatever reason, they're deciding not to come in. Is there anything else that we can do? I mean, so they're still going to be, those students are still going to be promoted to the next grade, I'm assuming.
Yeah, so one of the things I want to say also in regards to that, that's one of the reasons why we are also, through House Bill 1372, is to offer extended learning opportunities for the fall, spring, and we also have a plan for next summer as well. And that's one of the reasons, Ms. Savigny, is that there's a, there's a number of students that needed, we heard it tonight, they wanted the break. They needed the break. We, you know, we, it's our responsibility to invite them, right? And to make the opportunity available for them. We also know that there's a number of students that may be identifying compensatory services that may decide to start their compensatory services in the fall as well. So there's a lot of different fluctuation there. It's highly reliant on people's lives and what they're wanting to do this summer. Yes, we want them here. We've invited them. But the reality is that life plays a significant role, unfortunately, and folks are deciding to do other things at this time. The good news is that it is, it is going to be a part of our plan fall, spring, and summer of next year as well.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Whoops, I'm sorry, Mr. Kyler.
Yeah, and you mentioned all the coordination between the transportation and, I mean, the buildings, the whole bit for this. It's, it's a, it's a first. And like you say, you've been telling us since February, and it's tough. It seems like there's some kids going almost across the county at midday. Is that something, is, are there many? I've heard from some parents.
I don't understand the question. So they're coming.
That, are there kids? Let's say I'm in Hampstead Elementary, and then I go to Francis Guy Key after lunch. Is that happening or?
So there is. So and one of the, and one of the reasons why that is happening, and that's just an example you're using.
Yeah, yeah.
Is because we have a limited number of nurses as well. We know that in order to offer a program, we need to have a nurse in the building. So I commend Mr. Streaker and Mr. Shachny for collaborating and working on identifying those sites so that we can provide general education recovery services for half the day. And then it would be our responsibility also to provide compensatory services or extended school year services the other half of the day. So what they've done remarkably is to work together to figure out how the student can be there all day, but potentially have to go to two different sites on a specific day. Or on, you know, in regards to get both, both their types of services.
And then they'll be fed at one of the schools.
All students will receive a breakfast and a lunch. All students.
So that's a situation only for students who are there the whole day?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Streaker? Is that accurate? Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
I'll just stay up here for the next one, too.
Okay, all right. Annual Report of the Carroll County Teachers Advisory Council, 2021.
All right, Board Members. As you're aware, in June every year, we bring you the annual reports for the various Board Advisory Councils. This year, like a lot of other things, some of the initiatives of the councils were impacted to some degree by the pandemic. In the future, I'd spoken about this, you know, a while back, pre-pandemic. I still intend to convert this process of reporting to you to a work session format, where we could actually get a community member of the committee to come before the board and have some conversation around the year's worth of work of the board-appointed committees. We will start that next year. In other words, we'll aim for that throughout the course of this year. So when we get to this agenda item next year, I'd like to have it in a work session format where we'd give a half hour to each committee and allow opportunity for conversation between board and committee members. I think that that, that is, you know, provides the opportunity not just for conversation, but thanking our volunteers essentially in the community who are giving of their time and effort. So anyway, for this year, we do have the reports here for your review. We do have staff liaisons available for any questions that you may have.
Ms. Savigny.
Well, the first one that's up is the Teacher Advisory Council.
Advisory Council, yes.
Right? And I want to thank Mr. Anderson for his leadership on that group. It is my pleasure to have been the board member sitting on that committee for the last many years. And I am continually impressed by the caliber of this group and the engagement and the discussion and the questions that they ask. There's some fantastic feedback in here. I won't, I won't comment on it tonight other than to say that I read it all, and I've marked things up and highlighted it. And I have lots of things that I would love to follow up with you on, Mr. Anderson. But I just want to thank this group for their engagement for the last, not just this past year, but for the past several years.
And you did that well with the members of the committee, so thank you.
All right. Any other comments on that one? All right, now we will move on to the Annual Report of the Carroll County Career and Technical Advisory Council.
And again, we have staff available for any questions you might have.
While she's walking up, and you mentioned on that committee, and I'm lucky enough to be on this committee. And it's been great. I'll be so glad when we can be face to face. A, because you guys feed us, but. And you guys all know how these committees work, and it's great that so many people are involved. At one of the early meetings this year, there were a couple members that had trouble getting on. So I was getting text messages of, I've got this question, and you're on. Can you ask them? And it, and it works. It all got done, so thank you. But it'll be nice when this is, when this part of it's behind us.
Anything else? Any other questions? Well, thank you. And then we'll move on to 6D, Annual Report of the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee.
Mr. Shachny is here. He's also done some town halls.
Yes, we added some town halls to the, to our, to our agenda. We typically meet every other month, but on those off months, we added a town hall format, just an informal Q and A with me. And that was a great opportunity to engage with families throughout the course of the year.
I'll be back since we're in person again.
Sounds great.
Anything else? And thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Shachny, could I ask a quick question just about, how much of the, I know that the recommendations that come out of this committee are pretty standard recommendations. But how much time is spent at those meetings, kind of talking, going into the staffing plan recommendations that you put forth every year?
Sure, that's always a part of what I typically bring in the fall. And I'll share kind of my suggestions for what I'm looking for in the plan. And that's also feedback that I collect throughout the course of the year, too. It's not just a singular meeting in which we'll discuss that. But, you know, throughout my conversations with families in the course of the meeting, outside the meeting, and throughout other events, I'm always seeking feedback that goes in and to drive that document.
I will say that it is a very active group.
It is.
And it's very informative, very informative, because everyone has something different. And yeah, it's, it's, it's very eye-opening.
Yep. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll talk about the Annual Report of the Carroll County Community Advisory Council.
We do get some updates throughout the year at board meetings, but Ms. Gaddis is here.
Hi there.
Hi.
Thank you for all you do, and you all have lists of things you already want to work on, so.
Yes, we do. And we would encourage the board to assign us anything you would like us to look at during the year.
Right. Ms. Savigny?
And I appreciate that. And I think that, you know, with our meetings being so focused on pandemic things that had to happen this year, that, you know, we didn't have the focus on topics that we could necessarily give to the CAC. But I would like to suggest to our board when we have the Strategic Plan Update Session, the CAC is such an important part of the community piece of our strategic plan that I'd love to have some discussion during that pillar of what are the topics that we can engage with CAC over, over the next year? Just so that we spend some very specific time talking about what we think the CAC could help us with over the coming year.
And I would like to thank the CAC members for this year. It was a difficult year because we were virtual, but we did meet our attendance goals, and we're very proud of that.
Oh, that's, that's good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gaddis.
Ms. Gaddis, thank you for everything that you've done.
Yeah, I was going to say, Ms. Pataglia wanted to say something. Now we'll move on to 6G, the Annual Report of the Carroll County Security Advisory Council. I skipped one. Oh, Carroll County Curriculum Council. Wrong person, I was waiting for Dwayne.
She was setting their way.
I know, my fault. Any comments? Ms. Dorsey.
I'm a member, the board member to the council. And again, thanks, Mrs. McCoslin, for the wonderful year that we've had. Again, we've done it all virtually. But again, I don't think you've missed a beat as far as the information that's been presented and shared at our council meetings. And again, I think a highlight has been that we have our, our little website there. And again, we can refer to that. And it's also a site that board members and.
Anyone.
Yes, could, can actually visit just to get a real gist of some of the discussions that we've had during the year for the council. So again, I know that, you know, one of our major things is that we, you know, certainly present our recommendations for new curriculum materials. But again, we do more than that in that we certainly get a feel of so many different programs that are in place in the county. So again, thanks. I could go on, but I'll just stop for that and just say thank you again for your leadership on the committee.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey.
Mr. Kyler.
And she's tried to educate me on this committee, and I learned, I think maybe I learned a couple of things. But the one thing, and I just thought it would be good if you could just say a little bit about that tonight. Well, and one of our speakers tonight was on your committee. And her, her child is a senior, so she won't be on it anymore. But to, currently, to get on the committee, you need, they need to go to the principal of their child's school, correct? And I'm sure that's communicated. But I, I talked to parents who are, I want to be on a committee, I want to be on a committee. How do I do it? So do you mind just saying what they need to do?
No, so the process, for as long as I can remember, is that the administration at every single building provides the Department of Curriculum and Instruction with a parent representative who, who comes to the meetings, participates in the discussions, and takes that information back to share back to share with the building administrator and, and anybody else in the community that, that they talk with. So that, that, we also have student representatives, we have some teacher representatives, and, and so that's how it's always worked in the past.
And a lot of times, Mr. Kyler, the way that happens as well, you know, the administrators share the information in newsletters and certainly encourage, if they're interested parents who would want to be involved on the committee, they encourage them to, to step up and volunteer. And, you know, they also share information at the PTA and PTO meetings as far as trying to solicit some members to actually be interested in volunteering to be on the committee. So the opportunities are there.
Okay. Ms. Savigny? Did you want to say something?
No, I just wanted to thank Ms. McCoslin, because we've had some discussions in the past as well. And I, I think one of the things that I, that I would appreciate, I would get some thoughts from other board members as well, but about a digital angle of, of curriculum, because of the year that we've had, I think a lot of things came to light in terms of resources that were being used that weren't necessarily vetted out very well. And I think that, you know, we were talking about maybe building capacity of teachers and, and in terms of vettings, the resources that are available and what really are appropriate resources to use, helping build that capacity. And so I'm, I'm just curious if that's something that you think needs to be addressed as part of the Curriculum Council, or is that a policy that we as the board needs to write in terms of, you know, how, how those different reference materials are vetted or from a digital perspective?
So, I mean, content supervisors work with their teachers all the time to provide different types of resources available for them to use. In some cases, and you'll see tonight on the materials of instruction list, there's a, a book that's going to be used as a resource book, but not as the textbook for the building maintenance program. So it, they are vetted, the digital materials are vetted through instructional technology team and through tech services, and it really is a collaborative approach. We will continue to do professional learning with our teachers, with each other collaboratively on our staff, and through Curriculum Council. The goal is, when we're back in person, is to have work groups based by level and different contents where we are presenting sample lessons, getting more in-depth, having more in-depth conversations with the resources and how they would be utilized in the classroom and with students.
Anything else? All right. Thank you. All right. Now, we'll move on to the annual report of the Carroll County Security Advisory Council. Mr. Williams, you can come up and stretch your legs again. I'll be back in person. But he's one of those, you can't tell everything that goes on. Dr. Lockard?
Right. I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of the staff liaisons, to the, to the councils. There's a lot of work involved there, and appreciate you all bringing your expertise and experience to those groups, as well as our board member participants, and certainly our community members who give valuable time. So it's, it's a lot of work and a big commitment. Another reason why I'd like to move to a little more...
Mr. Williams, stop.
...personable approach next year.
Mr. Kyler always is like...
I gave you just enough time, Mr. Kyler, to formulate it.
Well, I, I wanted to mention, I didn't know if he, he was gonna like give a presentation or I should wait, but I, obviously, it wasn't all at the graduations, but I know the sheriff's department is so excited that at century, the speaker that the class picked was the SRO. I mean, it's a, that tells you how this program's working.
Yes.
And he did a great job, and the students gave him a standing ovation after his speech, so.
Deputy Harvey.
And I think the students selected him, right?
Yes.
They did.
I just think that's amazing.
Yes.
And yes, I'm slow. You gave me time to think about it.
Dr. Dorsey, okay.
Well, I just wanted to comment. I see that we have one student serving on the MCSS Student Focus Group, and I thought that that was very interesting and accolade for us.
And the goal is to try to do that each year, so that, I think the, the most important thing is that we solicit that within the schools, so we can get a number of students to apply. Not every, not every county, not every system has students serving on that, so I think it's an important role for us. It's a great opportunity for the students.
And you now have a staff, right? Two.
Yeah. I do today.
Ms. Pataglia?
I, I just wanted to thank you again, Mr. Williams, for making sure our system and our schools and our students and our staff is all safe, and that we are maintaining a safe approach to everything that we are doing. So I really appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
And Dr. Lockard, if I could, I just wanted to reiterate my support of, of trying to take that different approach next year. I mean, obviously, we had so much going on, but there's so much great work and so many awesome conversations that are happening within these committees, and I think I would, I would love for them to have the ability to have that open dialogue with us to talk about what their biggest concerns were and, and what their recommendations are.
All right. Now, we will move on to the construction report. 6H.
Okay, board members, this is the monthly construction report. Did see Mr. Marx entered the room there, and I did want to note one item. As you know, we've been working over the past two years with the state to clarify the state funding for projects under the new Built to Learn Act funding. Particularly, this would apply to the New East Middle School. With some very timely and critical support from our Carroll delegation, we've been able to clarify with the state that the funding we anticipated will indeed be available to us. This is great news, and I want to publicly thank our delegation for their work on this effort. Delegate Krebs worked hard with the IAC to achieve clarification, and Senator Reedy worked with other key officials. So we really appreciate that collaboration and their ongoing support and help on our behalf, and I'm excited about what, what lies ahead there. With that, questions for Mr. Marx?
And I do also want to thank the, our legislative group, because I was really kind of worried about that for a while, and things were dragging, and I thought, no, I do not want that to tank, and we need to move forward. So that was really good news.
It was very huge. It took one of the juggling balls into catch mode.
Yes. Does anybody have any questions about the construction report? Ms. Savigny?
I just want to ask one quick question. It looks like we are also getting some good news about the Moton parking lot situation, so.
We're very, very close.
Okay.
We, we, we work through some disagreements. We do have to do some redesign work, and they submitted that today to the county. The county has been cooperative. They assured us that it's their top priority for review, and we appreciate that. So we're anxiously awaiting a positive result on that from our discussions.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
And now, we will have a COVID-19 fiscal report. And it looks like there's not a lot of change.
The board members, you know, each month, we have been bringing the COVID-19 fiscal report. It details our expenditures directly tied to the pandemic. There aren't any update this month from last month's report, but I did want to note, this is the final report of the fiscal year, and so it's our intention to now reset for FY22. So this year's reports will be archived, they'll be, they'll remain available electronically along with the, you know, the, as we do for every, every board meeting, all the materials are posted. But Mr. Hartlove's gonna reset, so starting in July, it'll be a, a new fiscal year. And so with that, Chris is available for any questions you may have, but again, nothing different from last month.
Ms. Savigny? I was waiting.
You knew, right?
I knew.
Thanks, Mr. Hartlove. Sorry for making you come to the podium.
No problem, no problem.
But I, I appreciate kind of the, the way that you've set this up moving forward, where we can see exactly what the changes were over the past month. I'm assuming that when you move into the next fiscal year, that obviously, the first month, there's not going to be any change.
Correct.
It's going to be the same change, but then we'll, we'll kind of track it that way moving forward?
Right. And, and actually, I, I, I was thinking about this as we, as Dr. Lockard was, you know, introducing the item, and actually, this is because of the timing of the meetings, this is actually the May 31st, so we would actually have one more, one more report for the beginning. I didn't think about that, I, I, you know, but we would have the June 30th report that kind of finalizes the year, then, and that would come in July, and then in August, we'll have the first of the year. And it should, at that point, we're, we'll start seeing the expenses for the summer recovery and all those, those things that kick off, and those will, that's how the, the report will be populated, you know, going forward through the summer, and then the fall recovery and so on.
Right. Well, I was assuming that we're probably gonna start seeing some big numbers and some issue with the summer recovery learning in July.
No doubt. And it'll, and we'll probably, you know, we're probably gonna be moving work towards instructional costs and less on the, less of the, the mate, the, the, the building types of things, because we have that stuff in place already.
Right. And the summer recovery learning program in the summer will be completely funded by?
Correct. We have quite a bit of, as, you know, as you saw in the, in the budget that we just, just approved, quite a bit of federal dollars in there, and it'll all be covered by those dollars.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to our action items, and I need a motion for the approval of the Personnel Action Items.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, and I need a second.
I'll second it.
By Dr. Dorsey. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, board members, we have just one new hire on the monthly Personnel Action Agenda Item, which is outlined in the, in the packet.
Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, I need a motion for the approval of awards of bids, and this will be all of them, and then we'll go back, and then if we need to talk about individuals. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, and seconded by?
Seconded.
By Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, board members, there were 14, and we'll have 15 when we're all said and done.
Fifteen now, yeah.
Let me go through each of these for you quickly. The first is relocation of a portable classroom. Two months ago, we noted on the construction report that we were relocating two portable classrooms to different schools. You approved the first one for Elmer Wolf at the meeting. This is the award to move the second portable to Freedom Elementary School. Item number two is the Portico remediation at Linton Springs Elementary. This is an award for remediation of the Portico. Item number three, request for information content management system. This is for a new content management system, which will be more efficient and streamlined for school use, and there's details of that there. Item number four, Baltimore County Government Uniforms, a piggyback award for new uniforms for plant maintenance and operations staff. Item number five, track refurbishment at Westminster High School. This is a contract for the repair and refurbishment of the track at Westminster High School. This would be a summer project, hopefully completed prior to the fall athletic schedule. Item number six, maintenance and repair services for HVACR. This is, this item is to inform you of an award made under emergency procurement to repair water pipes that burst under the gym at West Middle School. Item number seven is for produce, a piggyback award to purchase and deliver produce as needed for school lunches through 2026, within an annual amount up to $80,000. Item number eight is for bread. Similarly, this award is for bread for school meals through 2026, with an annual amount up to $90,000. Bread is a little more expensive than produce, it looks like. Item number nine, school and office furniture, a pick list, purchase list for schools and offices to buy furniture as necessary. Number 10, consulting and technical services, project management and network operations management services. The next five, I'm gonna share with you items are contracts we bring you for approval in accordance with a prior recommendation from our legislative auditors. If we have service contracts which may likely exceed the $25,000 limit over the course of the fiscal year, we bring them to you for approval in advance. These five contracts are part of our technology services, and they fall into that category. So the first one, through the Carroll County Public Network, CCPN, to Skyline, is for network support, including our security infrastructure. Number 11, hardware and software agreement. This contract is through the Maryland Educational Enterprise Consortium, also known as MEAC. It's used for hardware and software purchases. Number 12, Dell installation. It's a new replacement contract for our installation services through Dell. Number 13, general purpose commercial IT equipment. This is the annual contract for support and maintenance service to our telecommunications network. And item number 14, technology service and, sorry, technology, security, and communication solutions. This is the annual contract for the purchase of technology hardware, peripherals, and other accessories. And finally, item number 15 is the, as it relates to the Manchester Valley High School digital sign installation. Your boards aware that the community fundraising process was successful? We would like to begin to work on procuring and placing the sign over the summer, and in our preliminary work, our, our purchasing office has received information that digital signs could take some time for delivery, in some cases, as long as 16 weeks. So in light of that, we wanted to bring the award of the sign installation to you now, contingent upon availability of all the funding. In that manner, we're able to act as quickly as possible in moving that project forward.
That's a lot. That was a lot. All right. Ms. Savigny? I didn't even look.
Don't even have to put my card up.
You have to put your card up on this one.
Okay. On the, the first item, it, it says that this is a relocation of one portable classroom, but that is a double. Is that correct? It is a double? Okay. And so we, we had 185,000, I think, in the CIP for FY21, so it looks like the total of the two bids is still gonna come within what we had budgeted?
Correct.
Okay. On the, on the second item, the, the Portico remediation at Linton Springs, is that, what it, what exactly is that? That's...
It's a portico, right?
Well, I meant, what, what is the remediation project for the portico?
There's been water that's been leaking through the brick back into the building and causing problems within the building. So in invest, we did some destructive investigation, found that the original installation didn't include the proper flashing that would have helped prevent that sort of thing, so we're gonna have to remove the brick and re-flash to prevent that from happening in the future.
Okay. But this isn't on nearly as large of a scale as the, the water issues that we had at Westminster High School?
No.
Okay.
It's, it's much, much smaller, but it's actually very similar in the fact that the flashing wasn't installed properly when it was installed. So that's why it's important that we do our investigations when we're having buildings built.
Right. Thanks. Should I keep going? Anybody else have any questions?
You just keep going until you're finished, then, then we'll do the rest.
So the, the content management system, can we just get a little bit of an overview of what information is housed on, on this system?
Good evening. The content management system is the, the software that's used to create the content for the website. So we've, we had many years ago, like a, 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 a system that was discontinued, and at the time, when we needed to get a new one, it was when we were in pretty lean budget times, and we quickly developed our own system, and that's just become a more and more of a challenge to keep up with, and it, you know, it, it didn't make sense for us to continue doing that work, so we had an opportunity to, you know, purchase a content management system. And so it manages the, the content that you see on the website. That's the easiest way of saying it.
Okay. Great. And under item number six, the emergency procurement, so the total cost of the, these repairs are 39,800, but it also said the gymnasium floor was damaged and needs to be refurbished over the summer. Do we anticipate that that will also be covered by insurance?
Well, actually, the, we had a little mess up here in the description. This will not be covered under the insurance. This is just old pipe that's aged, and we need to get it replaced that's actually failed. The gym floor, the result of the, of that leaking will be covered through our insurance, through MAB, so that's, that's really, that's what's gonna happen here. So yes, we, and we need to get started as soon as we can. We're drying the floor out as we speak.
Okay. And then, Dr. Lockard, on items seven and eight, those are the food services items. Those actually come out of the food services budget, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the, the items 10 through 14, the IT items, I, I know that we, we have to approve these every year because they could potentially be greater than the, the $25,000 amount, but are we expecting there to be a significant increase in any of these costs this year?
We're not expecting that. Is there any additional information, Gary?
Just, just the normal person. Can you do this? Okay. Okay. I think that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, I need a motion for the approval of the Educational Facilities Master Plan.
So moved.
By Ms. Savigny, and seconded by?
I'll second it.
By Ms. Pataglia.
Board members, each year in June, we bring the updated Educational Facilities Master Plan for your approval. It was presented back in May for, for discussion, and then submitted for public comment. So we've received very few public comments, and staff did answer the, the couple of public comments that we received or responded. As a reminder, once you approve the plan, it's then submitted to the state as part of the requirement.
Questions? Ms. Savigny?
Mr. Kane, would you mind giving just a quick overview of what the public comments included?
One of the questions was regarding the FCI score for Liberty High and why the, the process for prioritizing the modernizations, and I explained that the, the process is basically using the combined physical and functional assessment that's in Section 6, and that really only looks at the schools built prior to 1980. At the time, we did it in 2008. That was the priority, the, the older schools. We will be probably reevaluating, should we be looking at schools older than 1980, but I did explain that, right now, there's a statewide assessment being done for all schools across the state, and that we were gonna wait and see what the results of that is before we did anything locally, because the state is going to use the statewide assessment to prioritize capital funding decisions at the state level, so we want to make sure what, whatever we're doing is, is kind of working with what the state will be doing too, so.
I know we've talked about, you know, if and when we might want to update that physical and functional assessment, but we would want to wait until after the state does their review.
Yeah, the, the state is wrapping up the actual assessments now, actually was working on tonight while I was waiting, going through all of our data that they sent to make sure it's accurate. So there's a process, we're quality checking now, and then by the end of the summer, I think all the reports will be officially submitted to the state school construction program. And then, at that point, I think we'll be looking at what we should be doing locally. So for the next, next year's educational facility master plan, I think we'll be having a, you know, discussion about if we update it, how far would we go, and, and what process will we use? Will we stick with the same formula we did before? You know, it's, it's, it's almost 15 years old now, so would we look at doing something different? So, but that'll be the, the next year kind of discussion thing, so.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kyler?
One of the questions I was recently asked, and I think it was facetious, I think it was facetious because we had a couple HVAC issues in the last week. Like, this deferral of HVAC projects, and, and my comment was, I don't think we've had a meeting where either in construction or bidding or something, we didn't talk about HVAC. So it's obviously a focus of this school system, but with all the buildings you've got, it's probably not perfect in every building. But what, what, these deferrals, are they hurting us, or are we okay?
I mean, from, from the long-term facility plan, obviously, in the facility master plan, we've identified the, the systems that are, you know, well past their useful life based on industry standards. So ideally, in a perfect world, we have funding to replace those systems as, as needed. Unfortunately, you know, we're not in that situation, and almost everything we do, we never have enough to do the things we want to do. So I would say, you know, we have systems that we would like to replace, but our maintenance department does a great job of... department does a great job of...
And I mentioned, I mentioned that also. I said, yeah, our maintenance guys, and I know I'm old, the young, they're not the Maytag man. They pretty much bust it every day.
Yeah, so that's, you know, obviously, we, you know, we keep things running to keep kids in school, so we make them last longer, as long as they need to, really, so.
And one must remember that our HVAC systems weren't tested a whole lot last spring and last fall, and then, boy, has it gotten hot within the last three weeks, so. And I thank everybody for working so hard to get them up and running. Ms. Pataglia.
I was going to say the same thing. I mean, unfortunately, when weather changes so quickly, when you go from cold to hot, I mean, it's just like your house. I mean, unless you have somebody coming out to double-check everything right away, something's going to happen. I mean, it's just going to happen. It happens everywhere, so. But I do thank our maintenance department for, you know, getting everything going, and you can't control mother nature.
Yeah. And just, you know, we have over 4 million square feet of buildings to take care of, so. It's, it's not, it's hard to compare to when you're talking home. I mean, it's relatable, but it's a big job, so. But they do a great job.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of textbooks and instructional materials for 2021, 2022.
So moved.
Well, I'll say Dr. Dorsey and then Ms. Pataglia. There we go. We're on it down here.
All right. All right, board members, do you remember, these items were brought previously for discussion and are now returning for action. Ms. McCoslin is here, if you have any questions.
As I said, Ms. McCoslin, your Trevor Noah books in there, and I do read those when people have a lot of questions about them, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, I finally remembered to bring it back. Any questions or comments? Ms. Pataglia?
Savigny, you mean.
Okay, do you have any questions?
Oh, yeah. I just did note that there were a couple of no responses on here, but there didn't seem to be any negative, so they basically just voted no, but didn't say why?
That's correct.
Okay.
We tried to figure out who it might be, so we could reach out to kind of find out why, like what, you know, and, no.
Okay.
So.
Any other comments? Dr. Dorsey?
I think the process worked well, although, let's see, how many responses did we have altogether? Do we know? But again, it was a good process in place for the materials to be reviewed, and I actually took the time to come in to go through all of the materials as well. So again, you know, thank you for having it all available for us, and I appreciate the ones who took the time to actually go through the materials and to provide some feedback for us.
Yeah, we had 32 responses.
32, okay. And the one book was so thick, it's like, oh my goodness. But again, it was...
That was, I think, the book for building maintenance?
Right.
Where they use as a resource for the kids, if they have a specific question with one of the skills, that they can reference that particular book.
Right, and for that one, it was so interesting for me to go through it, because again, I got really caught up in the structure of how the informational text was being presented, but really, as far as the actual information, it's really where we depend on the supervisors and those in the know to determine the information that is being presented.
Did you have that whole book, Dr. Dorsey?
I spent some time going through the chapters, just looking at the format.
Right.
I think with the informational text, the format is just very important, and...
And for CTE, many of those, many of the books that we use were required either by that industry, or depending if we have an articulation agreement, for example, our Accounting One books, because we have an articulation agreement with Carroll Community College, where students can earn transcripted credit, we have to use the same textbook that they use. So many of the texts are adult-level texts, based on industry.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of the proposed list of courses for virtual program.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Savigny.
Again, board members, we brought these for discussion at the previous regular board meeting, and they're returning for action this evening.
Comments, questions?
Just going to say, you guys know where I stand on this, and, you know, I'm excited for this, but let's get other classes and keep it going, and...
And these aren't the only classes that are offered virtual.
Right.
So these are just, they would be in addition to what we already offer, that aren't currently, like, in our program of studies and that kind of thing. So, so there are, there's a lengthy list of courses that kids can participate in that are all vetted through content supervisors and curriculum instructors.
I mean, this is a good step, you know? I just hope we're going to get to the point, now that we've had to kind of go through this craziness, that kids can tap in other, you know, something can't, they can't get something in a school, they can get it in another school. And, I mean, this is a good start, you know, virtually for some of our students, and we can just expand it and keep going.
Agree.
Thank you.
DaVinci?
Do we know where students can access that list of virtual courses? Because oftentimes, I know, students aren't aware that they're offered, or it's not really properly communicated to them. So is it part of the program of studies or some other place?
So, so there is a list that is provided, I think, on the Maryland State Department of Education website, of all their approved virtual courses?
Okay, and then would students need to go there to find out more information about what courses they could take here in CCPS?
Last year was really the first year we sort of formalized our program. We had a very short list, and the school counselors had that list. Our goal last year was to, if a student was struggling with their schedule, they couldn't fill their schedule, their counselor would offer student, the courses to students. Plus, being in the middle of the pandemic, it was kind of wacky. So we're, right now, as we publish, as we move forward, publishing the full-time virtual program, we'll be putting the list on the website of all of the courses that are available.
And in the future, is it possible to include that in our program of studies itself? Because I know many students look towards that as the main resource when picking classes.
Thank you, Mr. Bricka. Yeah, so the plan is to provide a section that has our approved list of virtual courses through Carroll County Public Schools.
Awesome, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now we'll move to HE. I need a motion for the approval for athletic eligibility 2021, 2022.
So moved.
And I need a second?
I'll second it.
By Dr. Dorsey.
All right, board members, as you know, in recent COVID updates throughout this year, we've discussed eligibility for this year and what we would like to do for next year. So we're bringing you that formal recommendation for fall of the 2021, 2022 school year. Ms. McCabe, Mr. King, Mr. Duffy are all here and certainly could explain any main highlights and answer any questions that you may have.
Come on down, Mr. Duffy. So this will be for the fall, first nine weeks.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we are going to then revert back to then our normal 2.0, blah, blah, the rest.
That is certainly our recommendation.
Yes, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and I really, very sad that you, we, you know, I just want to go forward, but I do understand that that's, this is what I think we're really, we really need to do for this first quarter. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Ms. Savigny? Sure.
Just a clarification question. So we're saying at the end of the fourth quarter of this year, they need to have a 1.0 GPA.
They need to be passing all their classes.
Passing all their classes. But for, what about the interim of the first quarter? Like, so don't we normally have an interim requirement? Are we not?
The interim requirement only takes place with students who are on restricted eligibility, which means those who did not meet, and they have one opportunity for restricted eligibility during their four, their four years.
Okay.
So any one season, they have the one opportunity. We waived that this past year. So any student who did not pass all of his or her classes this year would have an opportunity to do that, and then must be, and then must meet the eligibility requirement by the interim.
Okay. DaVinci?
May I ask the reasoning behind why students in the virtual program aren't allowed to participate in extracurricular activities? Because I know that especially at the high school level, athletics are such an important part of some students' lives.
Sure, there's a few, there's a few reasons. One being the attendance requirement is, would be setting up two different tiers for students, whereas students who are in person need to be in attendance all day, on time. Students who are in a virtual format, the checking in is at a different time. So we would be having two different standards, and it would be very difficult to manage the two standards. And we also are trying to incur, we want our students to be in the building and participating.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kyler? Did you have a question?
I was going to, oh, sorry. I was, I was going to ask a similar question, because moving forward, you have to be in the building to participate in sports. And part of it, too, I think, is the criteria that students have to meet to stay virtual this fall, it would be hard for them to comply with that and still be, come to school and do sports. That would have to be a dilemma, too.
It would certainly complicate matters, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pataglia?
I just wanted to emphasize that this isn't just for athletics, that it is also for all extracurricular activities, music, band, drama, anything after school, FFA. So I think a lot of times we hear, like, we, they say we concentrate too much on athletics, and it's everything. It's all extracurriculars, that we want to make sure that kids can follow the rules in being eligible for.
Spot on, Ms. Pataglia.
DaVinci, did you have your card? Okay, all right, okay.
I was just going to reiterate Mr. Kyler's point, and that is the, the application component for the virtual instruction is related to COVID. And so...
Medical.
Right, and so that's why we structured it this way in terms of participation.
All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval of stormwater management deeds of easement for the Johnsville Road sidewalk project.
So moved.
Thank you. By Ms. Savigny and seconded by?
I'll second.
Dr. Dorsey.
This, board members, this seems to be the never-ending stormwater management deed, but this is the latest in a series of standard legal documents we have brought to you related to this county project on Johnsville Road.
Comments, questions? Ms. Savigny?
And Dr. Lockard, this says that it's the, that they get access to the properties, not the actual buildings. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, the properties, right.
Any other comments or questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now we will move on to 8J. Am I correct, Dr. Lockard?
Yes.
Everyone, I think, because we, yes, okay. Now I need a motion for the approval of additional legal fees for FY '21.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey and seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, each June, we work with our legal firm, Pessin Katz Law, to review and reconcile all legal invoices for the year. Any fees beyond the annual retainer, after the discount rates contained in the retainer agreement, are then brought to you for your approval. And so that's what we're bringing this evening, as we do each June.
Comments?
And less than last year.
Correct, correct.
And indeed, less than the previous five years as well.
Right.
Yes. All right, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the approval to retain legal counsel for FY '22.
So moved.
By Ms. Savigny and seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, likewise, each June, we bring for your approval the retainer agreement for the upcoming year. As you know, we have a very longstanding, great relationship with Mr. Omealy, Ms. Eisenberg, and Pessin Katz Law. They provide exceptional legal service to us and many other local boards of education in Maryland. The agreement with PK Law also provides us with full service, with a full-service firm that meets all of our legal needs for a full range of issues, employment law, education law, special education, contract law, et cetera. This year's agreement maintains the same structure as last year, including the same retainer, no charge for attendance at your business meetings, and a discount for any fees over retainer. There is a nominal increase of $5 to the hourly rate, which is contained in the fee structure we follow through the MAB Legal Services Association. We are pleased to recommend renewal of the annual agreement.
I can't thank you enough. We've, I've known you a long time, Mr. Omealy, and not only just being counsel, but you guys have been here a long time. How many years is it now?
I started in 86.
Okay, well, sorry to put you on the spot like that, but anyway, thank you. And Rochelle, you've all been, you've just been absolutely wonderful, and...
I'm asking how many systems he's done.
How many systems he's done?
How many school systems have you done?
In one capacity or another, we have done work for all but one. And that is, you know, either called up on a special ed matter, or a special, unique matter, or through the group insurance pool. And we do a lot of work through the MAB group insurance pool. But over the years, with the exception of Ann Rundell, and I think the last time I did anything for Ann Rundell was back in the 90s, all the rest. But, you know, as I've said to you all before, Carroll is home, and it's special in many ways. You know, I went to school here, my kids have gone to school here, my granddaughter went to school here before moving to West Virginia, and so it's a special place. And I say that not only on behalf of myself, but for Mrs. Eisenberg, who has actually done work for the school system longer than I have.
Right.
But you see me, you see Mrs. Eisenberg, but other people on your staff have worked closely with some of my partners, in particular, Dave Burkhouse, who has worked with Special Education Department, Mike Leaf, who works regularly with facilities on the stormwater management agreement, for example. Occasionally, we have copyright trademark issues, we have 403B compliance issues, you name it, and we've been involved in one capacity or another, but it's a labor of love, and I can't thank you enough. I truly enjoy every minute of working with you all, even when we occasionally get some thorny issues. But, you know, I look forward to a continued relationship with you in the coming year. Thank you.
And thank you so much for your guidance. Other comments? Dr.?
Oh, no, I was just saying, thank you.
Ms. Savigny?
I just wanted to personally thank you, Mr. Omealy, and Ms. Eisenberg. You know, for the two years that I spent as president of the board, we talked about a lot of different issues, and I just want to thank you for your, your guidance and your counsel during all of those times.
Thank you.
I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now we have some unfinished business, 10A, Board of Education Curriculum and Instruction Committee meetings. Dr. Lockard?
I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Anderson for a proposal for the board to consider and bring back in July.
Correct, yeah. Board members, this document that's in front of you now is for your consideration. This is a potential proposal to implement a Board of Education Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting that takes place monthly. This would be in addition to the current... This would be in addition to the current council that's already in place, that takes place, uh, throughout the school year. This would be a monthly meeting that would be taking place, um, and it would be, uh, basically created, um, with two board members, myself, um, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and our Director of Special Education. The purpose of this meeting would be to provide, uh, more insight, oversight, uh, more information as it relates to, um, current, uh, state, uh, legislation, uh, new standards, recommendations as it, as it pertains to instructional programming that we're looking to do. But essentially, what I've heard from the board members over the last several months are questions specific to curriculum, uh, specific to instruction, excuse me, um, that's taking place in our buildings. And the one thing, as, as Ms. McCoslin, um, has, has shared this evening, is we continue to work, and, and Dr. Dorsey, you made reference to this, to be more transparent. We heard comments this evening of concerns. We, we are more than willing to, um, communicate what, what our intentions are, what the curriculum is. And, and as you know, our curriculum is locally developed. We don't procure, uh, a program. And, and essentially, everything that we, we do utilize for instructional programming, you all eventually see and vote upon. But tonight I'll use a couple of examples as, as the materials were referenced. We could certainly, um, have more extensive conversation as it relates to materials that are coming up to be voted on, um, potential ideas that we're having in regards to where we want to go with instruction, other than, uh, what we've learned this year with Schoology, uh, which is going to be a huge endeavor for our school system, not next year, but the years out. We'd like to have those conversations with the board, and we would like to inform the board and let them, um, be very clear on what it is that we're, we're looking to do here in Carroll County Public Schools. This would be a monthly piece. And obviously, in, in a perfect world, um, what we would be discussing in this committee could eventually either find itself on, uh, the evening board agenda either that month or soon after the following month.
Dr. Lockard? Sorry, he had us up first.
Just a couple of clarifications. So the idea would be a, a monthly meeting. We involve two board members because any more than that would constitute a quorum. It would be open to the public.
Yes, at the bottom of the, of the actual proposal, um, public comment would take place at each one of these meetings. This would be an actual board, um, board meeting with public comment.
And, uh, before I, uh, put my card down here, I, Mr. Anderson and I have had a lot of conversation about this and, and for all the reasons that he stated, but I also have some experience in a couple of other districts where a very similar model was followed. And what I found was, just like we kind of heard tonight, when we were going through the, some of the different councils that board members sit on, um, it brings a whole nother level of information to our board meetings because they're actively involved, um, in, in those pieces and can get that information and, um, bounce ideas around. And so I think we're just that much better prepared when we, when we come to our meetings. And so, uh, I certainly think it's a, an idea absolutely worth, uh, worth looking into here.
Mr. Kyler?
Yeah, and I'd be curious of, of your opinion, Dr. Lockard, on this too. And again, I think it's a great idea, and, and I think it's great that it's two board members, and one will be the chair. The second board member, I, and I don't know what the board members think of this or what's best. Should we alternate to all get a chance to see it? Should it be a second one that does it for a year and then it changes? What, what's the best way to get communication to the group?
I can certainly start in the turn at the Dr. Lockard. The vision and the experiences that we've had, yes, the two members did remain the same for the year. Very similar to your council memberships. And, and what, what we're proposing is that we're bringing this to you now for, for your insight. We can then can bring it back, and, and if the board, um, at your pleasure would like to move forward with this, then what we could do is potentially identify the board members, just like we do with the councils for each year, and then have those individuals commit to it for a year, Dr. Lockard.
Right, and typically what we've seen in other experiences is somebody chairs it, the other person, then the following year takes the chair, and, and another person, a new person comes on. So you kind of have a, a buildup to, to that, sort of like vice president, president.
Ms. Savigny?
No, I just wanted to say I think this is a really good idea, and just want to throw my name in the hat for being one of the, uh, just to make you all aware, I'd be very interested in, in being on this particular group, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Da Vinci? Da Vinci?
So given that curriculum and instruction have the most impact on the students, and so many important decisions might be coming out of this committee, I strongly believe that, um, a student representative, hopefully the shrub, could participate in this council in some form, especially considering how important the student perspective would be to this. I don't know if that would constitute a quorum itself.
If we had two board members and either, well, let's just use the example of a student member of the board, does that constitute a quorum?
Student board member is not a, a quorum.
Right, so I'm just checking techn- technically.
Student board member would not be sufficient to be a quorum in Carroll-Cat.
Yeah.
And both student board members varies from county to county. By virtue, not of the board's decision, rather by virtue of legislative enactments that are peculiar to that county. So student board member would not be sufficient.
It's a great idea, and we'll definitely take that into consideration as we're moving forward.
Ms. Pataglia?
I was gonna say, just somewhat, just like in CAC, we have a student representative of CAC. Now, and not, it's not necessarily the, the board member, but it is a student within the student government. So I think that's something that definitely just kind of look in the, when we're thinking, if we're gonna think about putting a student on there, I think it would just look within the student government, within the county itself.
I would like to, um, so in my position as student representative, um, I've often been the main point of contact for students, um, and more so even than the Student Government Association in terms of asking questions about the board, what's happening, what they're doing with the curriculum. And I feel, um, that with my position, I am able to convey that information more effectively to the students themselves because they have one central figure to go to, which is why I would like to propose that the student representative on the board, the shrub, in the future might be the best candidate to put on this committee.
No, I, I'm just really, really pleased with all the excitement and the wanting to be a part of this. It's, it's, it's definitely something that, you know, I, I, I think that the board can have further discussion because it is your committee, um, and then that, that determination can be made. But we're, we're very excited, I'm very excited to hear that you're very receptive to this.
Mr. Kyler?
Where you've seen this in other systems, um, what's the, what's the average number at a meeting because of staff and, and, and public? And what time of day is this? Is this an evening meeting, a daytime meeting, or varies?
So, um, from my past experiences, it had been a, a daytime meeting, very, very similar to like curriculum council. It doesn't have to be. It, it, just a meeting that takes place monthly. To your first part of the question, uh, the number of folks. Typically, it is the, the curriculum folks, the special education folks, folks that are directly linked to instruction and curriculum, obviously, and then appropriate staff based on the topic or the agenda, uh, the agenda items that day. Typically, it goes from ninety minutes to two hours. There is a set schedule with specific topics of discussion and time tied to it.
So fifteen people maybe?
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is very intimate. Yeah, very intimate, yeah.
Any other comments?
You, um. Dr. Dorsey? I see the council is listed still as a separate entity.
That's correct.
Do you foresee any kind of overlapping of?
Of course, right? I, I do see some overlapping, but I see the, the charge of the council still very, very important, just like we saw this evening, to get intake from our community is, is very important as it relates to lots of things. And also, I think we're, we're educating the community also through the council on what our intentions are. I think that this, these are two different types of objectives. The one that I've, you know, since my, my tenure here, nearly three years, what I hear is that we have a board that's very interested in, in regards to our, our curriculum and, and what we're doing with it and where we're going with it. And I think that this type of committee would then be able to provide the, the, the information necessary. As we're getting information from the state, um, instead of us trying to fit it in into a, a typical, um, prime time evening meeting once a month, this would be another opportunity for us to be sharing information with board members on a more intimate and regular basis to have more conversation. I don't, I do see some overlap, but I don't see one, um, one objective not necessary any longer.
Ms. Pataglia?
I was just gonna ask a real quick question. How's the Global Citizenship Course coming along?
It's, it's, uh.
I love it, I can't help it, I love that course.
No, no, we, we have met, um, and that is something where we're looking at our current courses to see, uh, what's been offered, what hasn't been offered in some time. It's something, obviously, that we are very much considering. As I shared with you, I think maybe two months ago, when we talked about it, maybe a month ago, it's gonna take some time to put it together, it'll be an investment on our part. And, um, then also, that would be a perfect example of something that we would need to bring to the board to give you all some clear insight on what that course is, um, what it potentially had offered when you heard about it at MAB, and is that something the board wants to, you know, as a consensus, wants to move forward with? It's, you know, we, I, I have the information, you know, I came from that school system, and, um, I presented the information to a committee, the committee's discussed it, and I'll be quite honest with you, um, that it's taken a backseat over the last several months, unfortunately, but it's not something we've lost sight of.
I was gonna say, if it comes time to present to the board, I would love to see that video again that it was presented at MAB. The insight it gave from a student's perspect- perspective regarding the course.
Yeah.
That's what got me. That's what, that, that hit me the most.
So I have that information. Michelle Batten, um, who's in Ann Rundle County, and I are colleagues, and I've known her for a number of years now, so I can definitely provide that information to the board also, if they'd like to see it.
All right, well, thank you, and I know Ms. Savigny's interested, so we'll put her down, and if someone else is interested, just let me or Dr. Lockard know.
So I believe we'll bring this back then for, for a vote.
Absolutely.
In July.
Yes, that sounds good. All right, we will have a June twenty-first meeting. It starts at three, it is strategic plan. It will be followed by at five o'clock with a closed meeting, and then we will come back and have a Board of Education meeting again, and to, um, we will ratify contracts and personnel items at that time. So, um, then we also have a meeting on Wednesday, July fourteenth, at five, with citizen participation in the boardroom at one twenty-five North Court Street. And I want everyone to have a wonderful summer and good luck to summer recovery. I need a motion to, oh, got.
June twenty-first is a Monday.
Well, what is it, June twenty-third? No, well, June twenty, oh, I was reading off there, it said the twenty-first, it's.
It is the twenty-first, but it's a Monday.
Monday, sorry, yeah, Wednesday, I'm sorry.
Yep, yep.
Okay, it says Wednesday here, okay, all right, okay. So I wasn't going off the, the vote. Ms. Savigny?
Mrs. Herbert, I, I would like to, um, just hit, touch on a couple of unfinished business items.
Sure, absolutely.
Um, I just, kind of on the topic of budget, um, I, I've seen a lot of things out on social media saying that, um, that there seems to be a lot of impressions out there that we're increasing headcount in the school system as part of, um, the, the upcoming budget cycles. And that is definitely not true. And I, I think, but there's been a lot of moving parts, right? And a lot of confusion over how things are being implemented with federal dollars, how they have to be spent, or how they can be spent.
Restricted.
Restricted funds, right. And, um, I was wondering if we could request, um, Dr. Lockard, i- if it makes sense to put together, um, a total, a total headcount for the entire school system. You know, as it existed at the end of twenty nineteen, what it looked like, um, for twenty twenty, and what it will look like for twenty-one and twenty-two. Basically, just kind of showing that, okay, no, we're not increasing significant amounts of headcount anywhere. It's, you know, there, there's been a bit of musical chairs, right, with, with certain things going on. But even the question that's come up about virtual, the virtual program, like the, the bridge program, how those are going to be temporary positions, but, um, that's not an increase to headcount because we think that that will be handled through attrition the, the following year. And I think if we could just lay that out, you know, the, the only positions that we truly added that I'm aware of are the, the six special ed teachers last year.
Last year.
Right? And, um, a couple of, um, IT or tech positions, and one school counselor. And then there, there may have been a couple of other strategically placed positions over the last two to, two to three years, but, but that's it, right? Like, there has not been, and maybe some grant positions.
Right.
But I think if we could lay that out and just see, like, this is the total headcount that had been in the system over the last three years and what we're projecting for next year. It would put a lot of those rumors and confusion to rest.
We'd be happy to do that, that's easily done. You're correct, last year we did finally, for the first time in ten years, add some positions in our operating budget in the form, and that was through all those town halls, you remember, we attended and, and got feedback on. And that was, uh, you mentioned a few of those, special education, all supports in schools to support students. We did use some one-time funds in the form of fund balance last year, on a couple of critical areas. The only reason Carl Streeker is still standing is because we added some support to Felipe in, in, uh, in that office, and that was certainly timely. And then, you know, there's the, the, the ongoing confusion between federal dollars, grant dollars, and what's considered one-time that you can only use for a certain thing, that gets confused with, don't add one-time something, make it ongoing. Well, we, we can't, it, it's a, a set amount of money.
Doesn't work that way.
Only given once, and it, it can only be used for certain things. And so we can't commit it to, um, something that's in our operating budget, which is ongoing, because it won't be here to keep ongoing.
One-time money is not reoccurring.
Right, right. John?
I was only gonna add, Dr. Lockard, that in each, each of your operating budgets, and I get that it's a couple hundred pages, so not everybody probably reads that, but somewhere in there, in each one, there's a, a schedule or a chart that, I think, as I'm listening to you, describes exactly what you're saying. It shows any adjustments of FTE. I believe, Chris Knott, if I'm right, that, um, for instance, when Dr. Lockard mentioned using some fund balance for some temporary positions, those are listed, and that's denoted, that that's the funding source. So as a starting point, we could probably pull that, that one page out of each of the operating budgets and put them side by side and, and bring that back for discussion. But it's in the budget, it's in every budget, and it's, you know, it's not, it's not hard to find if you, if, if a person wanted to open the budget and look at each one.
Right, I mean, I think there's a couple, maybe a couple of different pages where different numbers are presented, and then, you know, if we could have that kind of presented side by side from, from year to year, we can understand and explain any differences that are there.
Chris will do that.
Yeah, we can bring that to the June twenty-first meeting.
Mr. Kyler?
Yeah, I wanna piggyback this, I know.
I think it's a piggyback on something.
Ms. Ms. Savigny has like five of these, but I wanted to piggyback on this, and, and Commissioner Weaver, I wouldn't mind hearing your input too. We were told tonight that everybody knows you can use one-time money for ongoing, uh, compensation to teachers, and you cannot, correct? And, and I think, it, it, because I look at, at what you were bringing up, a lot of people don't read all those pages, but there's so many rumors out there that, and they just seem to fester. And that's one, and, and like I say, the comment, one of the speakers tonight said, everybody knows you can use one-time money for that if you want. But like you just described, ongoing money, you cannot, correct?
It creates a structural.
You can use that one time, but that's it.
It's not gonna be there next year.
And no, it's not.
Yeah.
Or it doubles the following year, so, uh, that becomes a moot point.
That's right.
Exactly, and, and Dr. Lockard, I mean, you agree, correct?
Right, that's what I was, that's what I was trying to emphasize.
Yes, yes.
If you give me ten dollars, one year, I'll spend the ten dollars. If you say I'm gonna give you ten dollars every year in perpetuity, then I'll plan for what I want to spend that ten dollars for in, in perpetuity.
Mr. Kyler, I, I believe the comment was that one-time money could be pensionable. And, uh, you know, I'll look to Mr. O'Neill if, uh, his experience has changed, but I've tried that at the bargaining table. And, and believe me, it's embarrassing having agreed to that, because it would be nice if it was true. Having been told by the Maryland State Retirement Agency, you can't do this.
And that was the comment, you're right.
Yeah, and, and, and. Yeah, and, you know, certainly, it would be nice if you could give pensionable stipends, but in my experience, that just doesn't happen.
Ms. Sevigny, did you want to add more to this?
I just had one comment that I'd like to make about, so the raise history over time. I know we had a couple of folks speak during citizen participation, kind of indicating, making some indications that we hadn't provided appropriate raises in the recent past. And I just wanted to reiterate that since you and I have been on the board...
I was gonna say, you and I have made sure that every, for the last four, five years, we've been on...
Right, and the rest of the board members as well, over the last two years, you know, so the last five years, it's been for, for the CCEA bargaining unit, we've provided a 4.6%, right, so a step and a COLA, which was about 4.6% for each of the three years of 2017, 18, and 19. We also included a step, a COLA, plus another 1.5% of cur one dollars, which equated to a total of about 5% in year 2020. And then in 2021, even as the pandemic hit and we had a reduction in funds down to MOE from the commissioners, we still were able to provide a step to all of our employees in 2021. I mean, we can't talk about what we're negotiating or doing right now, but the last five years, I mean, even in the face of a pandemic, we've provided, yeah, in aggregate, 4.6, 4.6, 4.6, 5%, 2 and 2.5% are about the, and that equates to a 23% increase over the last five years. So, I just want to make sure that the message out there is that we have been providing significant increases to our employees over the last several years and we have met all of the obligations that we, or met all of the obligations that we had to our employees.
Right. Ms. Pataglia?
And the private sector hasn't been doing that at all. I mean...
Right, I mean, I did actually look at that in the, in the private sector, looking at nominal wage growth over that same five-year period. And it's been about 2.5 to 3% over that same time period for the private sector and so, but for our employees, we've averaged four. So, 2.5 to 3 versus four is what we've, we've been providing, so.
And given the situation, I mean, you know, it's tough, you know? I mean, the economy has changed so much in one ways or another, but, I mean, the reason why I ran was because schools were closed and that money was given to teachers' raises. Ever since then, they've received them. So, I know it's, I know it's a touchy subject and I know it's difficult and, but, you know, we need to, we need to make sure that the public does understand that, you know, we are working on it.
Dr. Lockard?
I just want to reiterate, for the public, obviously, we value very much our employees, all of them. We know the hard work our teachers have done this year in unbelievable circumstances. We've been advocating, Commissioner Weaver knows, we came and advocated for additional funds from the county with compensation as our top priority for employees. We're grateful for the additional consideration of one-time funds, thank you very much. But I don't want to get lost in this conversation. It's not an issue of how much we value, we certainly value our employees and we're looking at, as I know, the county wrestles with too, a lot of competing interests, but with only a certain amount of additional ongoing money, with most of it going to compensation, then it comes down to looking at, what do we begin to cut away? And I would argue that it's very difficult to consider cutting programs or staff, particularly after last year, where we're trying to now play catch-up. And so, these are, again, these are some of the competing things. We all have a goal of compensation and doing everything we can to reward our employees as best we can, but the ongoing dollars cause challenge for us for how, just how much we're able to do that. And so, I'm hopeful that we can come to some resolutions soon.
And I appreciate those comments, Dr. Lockard, because I mean, none of this is meant to imply, like, we absolutely value our teachers and we are tremendously thankful for all the hard work and effort that they've put in this past year. And we are doing our best faith effort to try to do as much as we can from a salary perspective.
If I may, the, you know, the county growing at 2.75 or 3% a year at budget, it's hard to, we have 5 and 6% when we're only getting 3% in. And, you know, we've talked about before, we have all these other obligations to go with, school board is, or the school system is a big part of that, half of the money, roughly, but we try to keep going and I know you understand, Dr. Dorsey, that we had years, about six or seven years, where it was just flat. And in '14, we started going up and we've had raises every year since then at, like you said, 3, 4%. And it's, it's what it is, what the raises are. I know throughout my teaching career, I averaged it out, it was 2% a year. And that's what it averaged over 37 years, 2% every year. Now, times have changed a little bit, but it's the way it's going to be and I guess for, right now, until we do other things, we're hoping, already looking ahead to next year's budget, and I know all the commissioners are, how are we gonna find funds for this? So, don't, you know, things aren't lost, but you guys have done a great job of taking what you have, adding some one-time money into there, and I think putting a good package together, of course, I'm not aware where you are in negotiations here, but I think it would be an extremely good package to, in the times we're in. But I do appreciate everybody's efforts going into trying to reward staff for what they've done. They've done a tremendous job this year with, you said, the circumstances are just unbelievable. Hopefully, these are changed, we'll get back to normal like tonight and go from there.
Thank you, Commissioner Weaver.
Okay, so, I made a statement at the last board meeting about racism and the state of inclusion in our schools, and I truly don't want the lived experiences of our minority students to just remain words and stories. So, I just wanted to ask, Dr. Lockard, if there has been any progress or even a timeline for the creation of an action plan in any form?
So, I'd shared, thank you, Devanchi, for your feedback. I'd shared at the last meeting, I wasn't gonna be prepared to be coming to the June board meeting with an action plan, so to speak. I think it's important that we also recognize, over the last three years, there's been a tremendous amount of initiative and work happening, particularly as it relates to pillar four and some of the objectives there within. We have a board work session coming up in two weeks where we're gonna be reviewing the strategic plan. I think that's a great place to look at some of the actions already in place. And I think there's things we can continue to work on and refine. There are things in place, there are things we can improve upon, that's why we look at the strategic plan all the time and say, where do we need support, where do we need help? And so, I would like to come to the strategic plan work session with conversation and I'd like to hear from board members and from you about some of those things that you think we could be doing more of, that you think that we could add to what we're already currently doing. I don't want it, I don't want it to be lost on the fact that there's been a tremendous amount of work happening throughout the course of the last three years, starting with, you know, reaching out to students at all of our high schools through getting feedback there, to the work of liaisons in our schools, to the work of Ms. Jones and her team of supports in terms of the work that happens with our employees. You've heard other members of the cabinet come to board meetings, John Shantres talk about some of the efforts there. We recognize, we haven't hit our targets in a lot of areas, so we continue to try to chip away at that. So, to your point, I hope we can have continued conversation about that moving forward.
Yeah, and definitely, and I truly respect all the work that has been done, especially in the past three years. But my urging for an action plan to be in place is because even though we have made these advances in the past three years, we still have many issues that are occurring and which haven't exactly been solved or haven't changed. And I truly believe that something concrete, like an action plan or a similar sort of format in that sense, would help in the implementation of improving this, the culture in our schools and creating more inclusive environments for our students.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? All right, so, thank all the educators, I hope they have a wonderful summer, cannot thank them for all they've done, and good luck to, again, summer recovery and hope that goes well with almost 4,000 students, that is a fantastic number. So, now I call for adjournment.
We're going back into closed, right?
No, no, we're not, yes. Do I have a, Dr. Dorsey, second and bye?
I'll second.
Ms. Pataglia? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have a great night, check the timeout.
Then we are returning to administrative function.